Afternoon, I'm sorry, good evening. I'd like to call to get order the Watkin County Council meeting for June 4th, 2019. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Yep.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Byrd?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Carol Frazi?
Here.
Sop Paul Sidoo?
Here.
Please enjoy me in the flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just a reminder, please turn off your cell phones, and if you'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for our office files. First up is two sets of mission minutes to have motion to approve.
Move to second.
Mr. Donovan moves approval, Ms. Brenner seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes, sorry, nay. That passes seven zero. Next item up will be several public hearings. Now, these public hearings will, the first set will be for specific issues, and then there'll be an open public session for issues not being specifically discussed. In this case, ordinance members who wish to address the council during our public hearing are asked to sign up at the back of the room. Prior to the meeting, the council chair will then ask those who have signed up to form a line in the podiums. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group is encouraged. When using the microphone, please speak close enough that you can hear yourself on the speakers. This will ensure that everybody else can hear your comments. First item up is a public hearing resolution authorizing the sale of surplus personal property pursuant to WCC 1.10. I have no one signed up. Does anybody wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public session. Is there a staff report? Nope. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Mr. Buchanan moves approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Frazi seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I can't support this because, and I'm not going to abstain this time. Last time I was trying to be nice and abstain, but there are a bunch of stuff here for surplus that doesn't tell us anything about the amount of hours it's been used, about any kind of repairs, what's been going on. And I asked my husband about a bunch of these things because he understands tools way better than I do. And he said, "Well, you can kind of figure it out." And these just aren't. They just say not apply, not apply, not apply, and there's a bunch of them. So I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Bird.
What's your concern? Is it that the values might not be appropriate, or that we should be selling them?
Well, my big concern is I just, I know they've already been replaced because the council majority voted to do that, but I don't like the idea of us getting rid of stuff just because we can. And maybe instead of the council voting to approve new, you know, equipment, or vehicles, or whatever, we should first find out if there's something wrong with what we've got. And I deserve, I think we all deserve to have at least it tell us, at least on some of the things, the miles driven, and on others, the hours used. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Further discussion, Mr. Bird.
I think that's fair. I mean, is it, are you possible to have an open hearing tonight and then get that information for a further vote in two weeks?
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. If I could refer to Exhibit A, there is a list of all of the capital equipment that's being replaced, and a majority of them include the estimated miles or the hours associated with them. There's some equipment that probably doesn't have miles or hours, and that's where the NAs, but the document did try to establish as many miles and hours associated with them, and it is that these have already been replaced based off of council's action associated with it, so.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I didn't say a majority of them did what I'm saying, but there's enough of them. There was like 10 or 12, or maybe even more. What page are you on?
337.
337?
So there is like, Item 437 is a trailer. It is an A. Item 467 is a sander.
There's like, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
So all of those items that are either driven or used have hours or mileage?
I know, and some of these are tools, but they're still worth us being able to know. And when they say not available, already replaced, that why even bother bringing that to us if you're going to just say that? And the reason I'm doing it this time is because I, last time I just abstained instead. And I don't think it's good to do that. I want all the information. And you may not be, like, in other words, you could at least find out, you know, how many times has it been repaired? Anything like that. Give us some kind of, so I can say, if somebody asks me about it, I can say, "Why?", instead of that it's already replaced.
Further discussion, Ms. Frazi.
I just want to say, like, they do have the dates, like 1989, 1971. I think some of these things do need to be replaced, just because of their date and their mileage. I think it's, I feel like it's all there, so I feel like I can make a decision and say, "Vote yes."
Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Donovan.
I'm not complaining about the ones with the dates. Those are vehicles. Those all have miles on them. I'm talking about the ones that say not apply, not, there's trail, there's a trailer, there's a welder, which I think is important, maybe it's just me. There's, there were several trailers. Here we go, two more trailers. I just think we deserve to know how much it's been used, has it been, has it had problems? Has it been, there been repairs, or what? And so I agree with what you said, Councilmember Frazi. Those just aren't the ones that I'm concerned about. They do have the mileage.
Well, I'd just like to say, the welder, the welder who joined it was first employed in 1971, and after 48 years of service, I think he's entitled to be retired, but...
The welder? I'm not talking about the guy who does the welding.
No, no, but the welder was bought in 1971. It's been in service for 48 years.
Well, my husband's welder's older than that. I want to know how much repair, I, I'm not changing my tune. It says not available. There's something that can tell us something, like how many times it's been repaired, or whatever.
Mr. Byrd.
I'm going to just, John.
And trailers.
I'm sorry, put you on the spot. While you're walking up, I mean, if we're going off date, my wife's going to replace me because I'm older than some of these guys. Not very many, but...
You're at risk. You're certainly after 1971.
Only a bigger problem here. Have all of these items actually been replaced, or are some of them, they're just at life and we're getting rid of them because we no longer need them?
These items are part and parcel to the, the rolling stock are all part and parcel to the budget discussion we had last September, October, November, when we went through the list of capital replacements. And we had this very discussion about the information that was available to you all to see the number of miles, and we took a look at the standard, industry standards for replacing fleet vehicles and all of that business. I can tell you for, for tools that are high value, that, and I'm talking about tools that are listed on here, that have some value associated with them, I don't know for a fact that all of those are part of the capital, that capital discussion. Nonetheless, there's some trust, I guess, you put in your staff that the, that the replacement of those vehicle, or excuse me, of those tools, like a B-50 roller. I don't even know what a B-50 roller is. All I know is that particular piece of equipment was bought in 1987 and has recently been, or at some point along the way, has been replaced. So we have in the yard a whole host of equipment that over the past couple of years has been piling up out there, to the point where, for the purpose of putting together a surplus package that then can draw some interest from the secondary markets. That's the whole purpose of this.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, there's...
Well, I'll go to auction.
Mr. Donovan?
What?
Mr. Donovan?
I got, it's okay. And you stole my line about the 1971 welder.
Can you say, Ms. Brenner?
No, I said, Mr. Donovan.
Oh.
Yeah. No, I said, the proposal before us is to sell these things at auction to recover some revenue for the county. These are, you know, sheriff's vehicles with 170,000 miles on them.
I didn't say those!
They're welders from 1971, or trailers from 1987, or whatever. I support trying to put these out for surplus and getting some money back from them. If there was opposition to these things being surplused, or to, you know, our staff's ability to say what our equipment and replacement schedule should be, I think that's when we should have this conversation, but I'm just sort of surprised that we would not want to try to recover some revenue from these surplus items, and it's kind of surprising to see that being opposed. But, and this is usually a really kind of consensus kind of thing, but that's just me.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, so, you know, if you want to have some more discussion about this, a public hearing is probably not the place. We could certainly go back to committee if you see the need to go back through these few items and present some more information about them. I'm more than happy to do that.
Brenner?
Yeah, I would. And also, there's a 2007 20-foot trailer here that's not applied, doesn't, and I think somebody could figure that out from back in 2007. I, there's just, this is, this happens all the time with us, and I just don't think it should. And I'm not, where did he go? Where did he, did he leave?
No.
Motion.
Where did John go?
Sitting back there.
Oh, there you are. Okay, sorry, didn't mean to scare you. I, I think that we deserve to know that kind of stuff, and it's just that there's a bunch of them. And this has, this isn't the first time. I brought it up before, but I haven't said no just because of that. I wouldn't mind having a 2007 20-foot trailer.
And bid on it?
Bid on it.
No, we can't, by the way, you guys. We can't bid on them. So, so there. No, but I, this is not, it's so easy to pick out the ones that, you know, you, I guess I'm used to people who take care of their tools, and I know that Public Works does. So I'm giving them a lot of credit. I know they take care of tools. That's why I don't understand why some of these are here, so.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero, six to one, with Ms. Brenner opposed. Next item up is an ordinance establishing a speed limit for the several roads in Bennett Drive. Do we have a staff report? No staff report? If you feel it's necessary, I can't remember if we covered this.
Jason Art, traffic technician, Public Works. Bennett Drive is the first one. Following a collision investigation at the intersection of Hollywood and McAlpine Roads, we found several roads in this area that would fall under the 35 unless otherwise posted ordinance. This is to clean that up and make them 25 miles per hour, which is more appropriate for the area.
Brenner?
Just one quick question. Changing the speed, what does the average speed limit now, not of what the speed limit's supposed to be, but what is the average of what people are driving?
I don't know that offhand.
Okay.
I would guess it's closer to 25. These are neighborhood roads.
Okay. No, I know the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you think, because one thing we've been told by Joe Routan many times is, "You can change speed limits, but if you don't make it sort of like what people drive, it's not going to do any good."
And the speed limits in the area are signed as 25 at the Bennett area.
That makes sense.
This was to just codify that and make them enforceable at 25.
Okay, thanks.
No, actually, that doesn't make sense to me. You're saying that there's a sign that says it's 25, but it's not 25?
Correct. So there's no speed limit ordinance, and if there's no ordinance, they fall under 35 unless otherwise posted.
But if it's posted...
But it's posted.
But it's, it's not in code. It shouldn't be posted at 25 if it's not in code that way, if there isn't an ordinance to back it up.
Ms. Brenner?
So this is kind of cleaning up, just a cleanup? Okay, that makes sense.
That won't have any impact on the number of accidents, because people already see the 25, and I pretty guarantee that none of them know the code doesn't actually make that enforceable. So by setting it, I mean, we're just, okay, interesting.
So if an officer gave a ticket there, someone could contest it, say that there's no ordinance for it, and it could be thrown out.
Because more to what Councilmember Brenner was saying, which is, if we set a speed limit, but it's not what people are going to drive in that area anyway, then is it have a positive impact or not? But I understand why you're doing it.
Brenner?
Well, except, if I understand you correctly, this is just to make it, to clean it up, because that is what they're doing now anyway.
Correct, yeah. It's signed in what we call like a neighborhood, so there's a sign coming into the neighborhood at each entrance. It's just these roads were never put that way, I guess.
Is that only for the Bennett Drive that is signed, or is Delta also signed then?
Delta is also signed the same way.
Northwest as well?
Some of the roads on Northwest, except for Clarkson. Clarkson Lane was a petition from residents to lower it to 25.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing, and the first person I have signed up is Ken Demoros. Is anybody else who wishes to speak on this particular issue, please line up after Mr. Demoros.
Sure, everybody in this room, including myself, is wondering what could I possibly have to say about speed limits. But the only thing I do want to say is that this entire conversation about the speed limit in this area is going to be irrelevant about a year, because it's going to be in the city of Bellingham, subject to annexation.
All right, could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Ken Domrod, District 2, taxpayer and voter. Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council?
Second.
Mr. Byrd moves approval, Mr. Donovan seconds. Discussion? Oh, you second. Mr. Byrd moves approval, Mr. Buchanan seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sop Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next item up is a public hearing for an ordinance establishing a speed limit for the Delta Line Road. Again, is there a staff report on this? No staff report? With that, I'll open the public hearing. I have Max Perry signed up, and if there's anybody else who wishes to speak on this particular issue, please sign, line up after Mr. Perry.
Max Perry, Watkin County. My question is, on Delta Line Road, we have our business on one section of that. There's three sections to Delta Line Road, divided by the freeway and some other county roads. So I'm curious where the speed limit is being limited at that, which I'm not disagreeing with it. And the same thing, I didn't see the Northwest, and I live on Northwest, so I'm just curious where the speed limit is.
It's not where you live.
I would like to have it out by my place, so I can get the mail without taking my life in my hands. Thank you.
So for Delta Line Road, it's between Vista and Grandview, or just north of Grandview. It's an industrial park that, there's a map with the ordinance. Jason Art, I know.
Okay. All right, anybody else who wishes to speak?
Instead of making him walk back down about Northwest, maybe you could just tell Max about Northwest.
So Northwest, it's, it's not actually Northwest Drive, it's Clarkson Lane, which is a residential road off of Northwest. Ling Boom Road, Kent Drive, Lane Court, and Gerard Drive, which are off of Northwest also, just residential area.
Further discussion on the motion, the ordinance establishing a speed limit for Delta Line Road.
Is that actually in the city limits of Ferndale?
No.
No, it's not.
So, I mean, what qualifies as a neighborhood? Because that seems pretty rural. I mean, that's what our...
It's a little pocket of development there, though.
It's a, it's a plat.
Is? What's the zoning on that?
I do not.
All around there is 35, so...
Any further questions?
Grandview is 35 right there, right?
Later, you mean.
Mr. Byrd, what are you, what are you talking about?
Well, I'm just looking at like, the crossroads on the map. Because, I mean, where it's located with that area, Portal Way and Grandview, I mean, that's outside the city limits a bit of a ways, right? So, I mean, that's, I'm just trying to think of what neighborhood I know out there, or what density I know out there. It seems like that's a pretty rural area to be...
Talking about Delta Line, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the Delta Line one is an industrial park. It's all zoned industrial.
Is that inside of the actual park?
So Delta Line, sorry, Delta Line is not a neighborhood. Delta Line is an industrial area. Northwest Drive ones are a neighborhood.
That's the next, yeah, sorry.
Delta Line has several businesses, Perry Pallett, several other industrial businesses in it.
Joe Routan with Public Works. In about 2003 or 2004, Mr. Klaus Klicks got an EDI grant to relocate Delta Line Road off of Grandview and build that little road we're talking about. And a great little project, really helped the access in that area. And that was designed and signed at the time, and has been ever since, as 25. It's currently signed as 25. So once again, this is a cleanup, just to get the ordinance to back the sign. It was something that we just didn't do when that road was relocated. We wouldn't be changing any condition out there.
Further discussion on this particular ordinance for Delta Line Road. Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll. Sorry, is there anybody else who wanted to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have, I don't have a motion to approve, do I?
Move to approve.
Mr. Donovan moves to approve. Ms. Frazi seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sop Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next item up is AB 2019-289, an ordinance establishing a speed limit for several roads in the Northwest Drive area. Is, we've just had the staff report, correct?
Yeah.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anybody signed up. Does anybody wish to speak to this particular issue? Seeing none, or close the public hearing? What's the wish of the council?
Move approval.
Brenner moves approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Frazi seconds. Discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sop Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes. That passes seven zero. Next item up is AB 2019-306, ordinance amending Watkin County Code Chapters 11.16, 11.12, 11.32, to protect Lake Samish water quality and shoreline properties. Is there a staff report? Seeing none, with that, I will open the public hearing. And, ah, this one's got some interest. So with that, I will start with James Wilson, Mary Hess, Mike Hess, Jerry Johnson, Peggy Juratt, and Kathy Plager.
Councilmembers, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is James Wilson from Bellingham. I live at Lake Samish. The ordinance before you speaks to three issues at Lake Samish concerning safety and protection for erosion. The first one, I believe, speaks to increasing the current distance from shoreline and docks for boats that are operating above six miles an hour, to go from 150 feet to 300 feet. This is the same protection that is currently available for Lake Watcom. We're only asking for equivalent protection there. The second ordinance is looking for a no-wake zone in the narrower part of the lake that goes from the bridge near the county park to an area several hundred feet to the east of that. That is a narrow area that is commonly populated by people who use the park, swimming, kayaking, paddle boarding, and using non-motorized forms of transportation. It's also narrow enough that a 300-foot limit on each side would make the area in between fairly difficult to use, at any rate, in a, in a high-speed recreational boat manner. The issues speak to erosion, they speak to property damage, they speak to safety of people on docks, numerous, numerous issues that affect the greater, greater public economically and on a safety standpoint. The third ordinance speaks to, or the third part of it speaks to restricting the use of two-stroke motors to environmental restrictions as specified in the ordinance. This was done a long time ago at Lake Watcom, and it just was left off of Lake Samish. Basically, it's getting rid of the most polluting kinds of engines, which really nobody should want on the water at any rate, and they certainly don't want them on an area where people are using it for drinking water. I want to speak in favor of all three parts of this ordinance. I think it's fairly self-avantant for the reasons I've experienced dock damage, I've experienced heavy erosion. The no-wake zone also encompasses an area of the lake where the road is close enough to the lake that it is heavily and easily damaged by wave action that could be a great deal of cost issue to taxpayers and to the county for repair, and I think that's another reason to put that in there. We have several people to speak. Two of them have asked me to...
Thirty seconds, please.
Two of them have asked me to present some letters for them in terms of saving you some time. Rather than read them, I'll just simply say that they reiterate the information I have, and there are other people in the audience who will not be speaking who have asked to show that they're here in support of the ordinances and your approval. Thank you.
Well, I just asked people to move up to the podium, so that it'll just make everything move quicker for everybody.
Hi, I'm Mary Hess, and I live on Lake Samish, and I am a citizen of Bellingham. And I wanted to also talk about, with the 300-foot distance from the shore, I am not sure that the wake boats, the displacement of those, those boats is, is still not going to have an impact in the erosion of the shoreline and damage to the docks. I don't know that there's any specific distance that has been studied and can prove that there won't be damage, and it just concerns me that the amount of change that we've seen since wake boats have been introduced to Lake Samish. Second is that I think the boats themselves, when we, you know, Lake Samish is a narrower lake than Lake Watcom, and so we have a smaller area within that open distance for the recreational boats. And to me, putting all of them together in that same area, I have great concerns of what's going to happen 4th of July, and is that going to cause us a safety issue? And again, my major concern is the wake boats, because it's very difficult to even safely waterski out, or paddleboat, or whatever, in that, in the same vicinity as the wake boats. So that is another safety issue that I feel concerned about, the wake boats. We talked about the erosion issue, water quality. I have recently joined a group of watershed watchers for Lake Samish, because we are concerned about our drinking water quality. And the potential introduction of the quagga mussels and zebra mussels is a great concern. And there have been recent studies that the state of Minnesota... And there have been recent studies that the state of Minnesota has done that has proven that the transfer of these invasive species are much greater with wake boats because of the huge amount of ballast water that they're bringing in to the lake's environment.
Thirty seconds, please.
So, because of that, you know, I almost would like to see us go a step further on Lake Samish and actually ban wake boats. But I am in support of what we currently have on the docket, but I think that more needs to be done to be protective of our lake quality, water quality. Thank you.
Okay.
Jerry Johnson, thirty-five years on the lake, and I'm in, I turned in a statement of an email that was sent by a neighbor who's a property manager on the lake, and you can read that another time if you'd like. I'm confident that it will pass, so I'm not going to talk about trying to urge you to pass it, but rather what needs to be done in addition to that. One is there's a boat ramp, and you certainly need to prepare some kind of a handout to give to the people as they bring the boats to the lake, telling them about the new rules and regulations and why we're doing it, trying to protect the lake that is our drinking water. Secondly, is the handout should go to the four hundred and fifty homeowners as well. There is a mailing list that we have, because some of the worst offenders are our neighbors. And they need to know the new rules and regulations as well. The third one is there should be a demarcation of the no-wake zone, of some kind of a buoy system. Right now, there's just two little floating white buoys, and nobody has any idea really what it means. But if there was a string of buoys across that people could, then they have to pass that line. They would know that that's no-wake from that point in. And that needs to be somehow instituted. And the fourth is some form of increased sheriff presence for the, at least the first summer. The sheriff was out there yesterday, and it has a big impact, even if they're there for an hour, an hour and a half. People see him, and they're aware of him, and they're more careful, and if that could be done as well. I thank you for considering the ordinance. This is an action that should have been taken back in nineteen ninety, when they enforced the Lake Watcom action, and Lake Samish was pushed back to one-fifty. It should have been all uniform at that time. And so, what you just did with the speed limits, you're now trying to correct the situation as well. That was done in nineteen ninety, so thank you.
Before we start, after these people, I need Dave Monroe, Bert, and Deborah Newberry, and Arthur, I think it's Badoff.
Good, good evening. My name is Mike Hess, seven-one-seven West Lake Samish, Bellingham. And I also have concerns with the effect of the wake boats on Lake Samish. I have been hit unawares by the wakes from these boats while I've been swimming, while I've been in my canoe, while I've attempted to pull waterskiers, et cetera. And it is a hazard, and it's a larger, it creates, they create a larger hazard than smaller displacement boats, like sailboats, obviously, or waterski boats. Wakeboard boats are their own category, however, and I think having a one-size-fits-all ordinance with a three-hundred-foot distance from shore may not effectively do much with the large wakes created by these boats. And it also penalizes the other boat users that are traveling over that six-mile-an-hour speed limit. Thank you.
Okay.
Penny Jewitt. My, my husband and I are thirty-four-year residents of the lake, and actually, my husband was born on the lake and has been waterskiing on the lake for over sixty-five years. Like everything else, things change. Back then, boats were just over hundreds of pounds. Now, they're trying to make these displacements, you know, over thousands of pounds. So, things change, and this needs to be revisited. And like people said, when this was done for Lake Watcom, it, it really should have been done for Lake Samish. Our big thing is, there's three things, three concerns, is the wake sizes, the AIS, and education. AIS is really important to us because it is our drink, a lot of people are stunned that there is no public water out there. We all draw from the lake with our own systems. And so, it's really important that this is taken care of. Currently, we, they have the station at, at the boat launch, but beyond that, who patrols it? The sheriff's office, they don't check on it. So, we, we want, we really want to know who takes care of that, too. I mean, who's supposed to address that? With the, the size of the boats, education is important because we really don't think that people understand what their wakes do to the people that are on the shores and on the docks alongside these. We've had kids knocked over. We fortunately haven't had anybody tossed off the dock yet, but some people have. So, that is, it's, it's a big concern, and it, it needs to be moved out. The other thing is, is that we really want some education on this. And as Jerry said, you know, it's not just people coming to the lake at the, at the boat ramp. It's people on the lake, too, need to be made aware, because some people visit, they have friends come in, and they're not, you know, they don't know what the rules are, so we, we think education is very important. And then also, my husband and I would really like to thank Becky Wilson for putting this together because she's done a tremendous amount of work on it, and we totally support what's going on, and we want to be proactive.
Thirty seconds, please.
And so, we're really in support of this. Thank you.
And again, after Kathy Plager, Dave Monroe, Bert and Deborah Newberry, and Arthur Badoff.
Shall I start?
Go ahead.
My name is Dave Morrow. I'm a twenty-year resident of Lake Samish. Live on Green Point, which is a little spit that kind of sticks out at the north end. Just briefly, I'd like to speak to the expense of maintaining my property in an environment of wake boats. And I calculate it costs me almost two thousand bucks a year in damage done by the wakes of these boats. I, I want to make sure everybody understands the magnitude of what we're talking about. So, these boats are designed to throw the biggest possible wake so that you can actually surf on that wake, and it's as tall as this podium. Now, imagine for a minute that thing hitting a dock, and the dock gets picked up and heaved into the pilings. I've had three pilings sheared off by that alone, and these are big hefty pilings, not cheap to replace, by the way. So, the, the expense is part of it, and the erosion is part of it. These boats are a league unto themselves. But more to my point of concern is really just safety and common sharing of the quality of this recreational resource. When you have one group of people pulling a wake boat, they affect everyone else on the lake and everyone on the shoreline. I've got two-year-old twin grandsons, and I don't feel safe having them on my dock. It'll heave them off into the water. I shouldn't have to have these concerns. My wife likes to go out and paddleboard. She's got to get up at the break of dawn, because if you're out there when a wake boat's out there, it ain't happening. You're going to be swimming really quick. And so, my point is that we, we all would like to share this resource, but some of the people using it are not absorbing the full cost of their recreation, and they're greatly affecting to the detriment of other people enjoying it. To go one step further, I would say that I have my doubts that even the three-hundred-foot barrier is going to solve this issue with the wake boats. I've watched wakes go by a thousand feet out, and they're plenty tall when they slam into my dock. So, I think we're all probably going to be back here talking about this again within a year, but I'm a reasonable guy. I'm willing to give it a try, and so this is maybe a good first step, and I do support this initiative. I thank you for listening.
Okay.
My name is Art Badorf, a full-time resident on the south end of Lake Samish for about five years, and have been visiting a family house on there for about forty years. I'm here to support the proposed revisions to the ordinances. We have a wooden dock and a float at our property, which is quite old, and it's required maintenance over time, which is to be expected. But over the last few years, with the introduction of these wakeboards or surf boats, we've noticed there's been a lot more accelerated damage to these floats. And the cost to repair, replace the floats is, you know, quite considerable. A neighbor just had his whole dock replaced for like ninety thousand dollars. As a kayaker and a canoeer, I would also feel safer with the longer distance required of these boats from the shore so I don't have to worry about being knocked over. Our family enjoys waterskiing, but maintaining a further distance from docks or shoreline is a minor inconvenience, and if it can help preserve our dock and those of our neighbors, we're all in favor of it. Also, by increasing the required distance to three hundred feet, we hope the damaging wake from the Fourth of July boat parade will also be decreased. Also concerned, as other people have been, about the erosion of the shoreline. It's a cost to the taxpayers to repair that. We've chosen, my wife and I have chosen to live on Lake Samish for its beauty and tranquility. Being able to sit on our dock in the evening with our beverage of choice without worrying about being bounced around is what we look forward to. As far as the AIS, I think that's also a really important issue. I mean, we just had our boats inspected at our house, the non-motorized boats, and speaking to the inspectors, they're saying, you know, they're not being staffed full-time down there. There's like during the week, they're not there in the afternoon, so who knows what can be introduced into the lake during this period while they're trying to find additional staff. And as mentioned, you know, we all depend on the lake water for our drinking water. There's no public water, so it's like, we definitely want to keep all invasive species out of the lake, and anything we, you know, that we can do to do that, we're all support. And I thank you all, and I hope you all support this revisions to the ordinances.
Miranda Sealti, Becky O'Brien Wilson, and then anybody else that wishes to come up and speak.
My name is Kathy Plager. My husband and I have owned a property on Lake Samish since eighty-eight. And over the years, obviously, recreation changes, and we've seen the evolution or devolution of the different watercraft. And I personally have a little story that I thought might help you visualize these waves. We have a concrete dock, and it's made up of sections. And not long ago, this huge wave came and actually lifted a piece. It's four by four by five. It's a triangular piece up off of its framework and flipped it over. It's probably over two hundred pounds of concrete. But, and, you know, I support, like everybody else, a revision where we at least have these boats further away from the shoreline, and hopefully, that would reduce the impact on the shore. And I just want to thank you for the AIS inspections. I think they've made a difference, and that's all. Thank you.
And then, if there's nobody else after the speaker, we'll close the public hearing.
Meredith Scully. And I'm a relatively recent transplant to Lake Samish. But already, speaking to damage, my dock has already been damaged by waves. Also, speaking to invasive species, my understanding is that they were out putting stickers on all my boats the other day. And my understanding is that the larger that an engine is, the more places there are for invasive species, bits and pieces, seeds, and also small baby mud snails and that kind of thing to hide. The other thing I want to speak to is, is safety. I'm a rower, and I cannot go out on the lake with, when the big boats are out, when the ballast boats are out, because, well, unless I want to practice my flipping techniques, then that would be a good opportunity to do that. But, you know, the shelves are not very stable. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention is that on Lake Stevens some years ago, there was a rower who was killed by a speedboat, ran straight over him. And there were two lives ruined that day. The young man who ran over the rower and killed him, as well as the rower and his family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bert Newberry. I'm, I live on Lake Samish. I would just like to briefly express my support for all aspects of this and urge all of you to support it likewise. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One is that my family owns a ski boat. We ski on Lake Samish. Lake Samish is a fantastic, fantastic lake for that, and it will remain a fantastic lake for that after, you know, this ordinance has changed. More specifically, I'd say, well, our dock has suffered damage. But I'm a professional civil engineer, and the shoreline is eroding significantly by our property. On our property, the road is, oh, I don't know, probably ten feet up from the, vertically from the lake, but it's almost adjacent to the shoreline. And if you stand on our dock, you can look where it's eroding away and look back underneath, essentially under the road. And it's only a matter of time before there's significant cost. Hopefully, it'll be repaired before it collapses, but I guess that's the one specific thing. I, I support the, all aspects of the proposal for the reasons already stated. Thanks.
I'm Becky O'Brien Wilson, and I live at Lake Samish. And I just wanted to summarize that we are asking for the same protections that the property owners on Lake Watcom have had since nineteen ninety. So, for thirty years, they've enjoyed protection from what the changes in recreational boating have brought about. We are concerned about our drinking water quality because, as we've talked in the past, we don't really have options for a public water source at this point in time, nor can we put wells in because of the quality of the water. We are concerned about the adequacy of the current aquatic invasive species program. In addressing our concern, we know specifically that ballast boats are a large concern because they draw up sometimes six thousand pounds of water from a lake, and then they dump it back into a lake. And we know that even once they have drained their ballast tanks, studies have shown that they retain a large amount of water. That doesn't dry out. We know that our access to the lake is not locked when there are no inspection people. We know that the Airbnbs on the lake do not necessarily educate their visitors to go through inspection. And so, we are very concerned about losing the quality of our drinking water, reminding you that we, of all the lakes in Lake Wat, in Watcom County, we have one invasive species, which is water lilies. We are extremely clean. Safety, we shouldn't have to worry about having children or, in my case, older people on the docks and having them knocked off or injured. Jerry, last year, saved me from falling off my dock during the boat parade. So, I am one of those older people who will always be concerned about falling into the lake. Property damage, the increased costs and regulations that we undergo to repair our docks results in tens of thousands of dollars of cost to us as property owners. Erosion from the wake action is happening all around the lake. The thing is, with the Shoreline Protection Act, you can't go out and do anything about that. It's regulated that you can't. So, in fact, shoreline protection falls to you. We can't do anything about it. You need to regulate a distance from shore that allows for wake dispersment. And if the wake is too large to disperse on a smaller lake like Lake Samish, then I suggest you consider regulating the type of boats that are appropriate to the lake. There are many users of the lake. We are not asking for elimination of any one type of recreation. Rather, we're asking for reasonable restriction of a type of recreation on behalf of all of the users of the lake. of all of the users of the lake and the property owners on who the cost of property damage falls. Thank you for considering our requests.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I shall close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
Move approval.
Mr. Buchanan moves approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Sidhu. Mrs. Donovan.
I want to thank Becky and everybody for bringing this to our attention, and I think there's more that we need to do than just what's in this proposal right now, and I hope we can get back to the AIS issues and the enforcement issues, and another discussion maybe about what we do about these boats generally. The, I messed up, and if you look in your packet, I've got the code changes for the first, if you look at page 358, so it's resolved to change the code about wakes and speed limits. The third, now therefore be it ordained, I'm sorry, on page 358, the code changes for the prohibition of two-stroke engines, which again is to make Samish be treated like Watcom as a, as a drinking water source. That didn't get in the packet. So what I was just handing out to you, if you look at, it says, Chapter 1132, special restrictions, and I floated this by, cameras, John, did I? Yeah. The code that would be changed on that would be on the second page of what I just walked around, which is 1132020. Speed shall be, I'm sorry, there's, there's a, but if everybody, you got it. The, the page that has the gray highlighted bit, the only thing we would have to do for the two-stroke is to adopt this language at the bottom of the second page. I sent it, not points two, three, four, or five, but the highlighted thing that is just the beginning of it and point one, and decide what the date would be when two strokes would be prohibited. So when it, when it happened at Samish, it was kind of like, you know, just do it tomorrow, you know, give people some time. So that didn't get in the packet. That's my fault, but I, but we would need to decide, you know, is it immediate? Is it a year from now?
Just a point of procedure. Ms. Franks, have you seen this?
No.
No, okay, because I, I have a concern that this is, this is not properly noticed. Yeah. Mr. Bird.
Will you finish that train of thought? Could you be a little more detailed, Councilmember Brown?
My concern is that the, that wasn't in the packet and therefore is not properly noticed.
Right.
Yeah.
The third piece of it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think you will have to have another public hearing to address the correct, corrected version of the ordinance.
Could we amend it to do the first two, and then we'll just come back to the third one as a separate?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so I've got comments, but did you have comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Councilmember Brown said. Becky, I think you did fantastic work on this, and I really appreciate it. If it wasn't for all of that work, I don't think we would be seeing this, or this would be happening for your neighbors and yourself. I think that's, is probably one of the hardest things that we have to do here, is make decisions between what's equitable with different groups, and do it in a way where we can help groups without taking away the rights of somebody else. And what you brought forward and how you presented it, I think you did that very well. I think that you're giving not only better benefits for you that live around the lake, but also maintaining the rights of those individuals that are using the lakes. And I think you're doing it in a way that it also helps all the taxpayers across the county with the amount of damage that is causing just to the roads and structures that we have to support. So I very much appreciate that and what you put forward. So, thank you.
Mrs. Donovan, and then myself. Oh, sorry, Mr. Sidhu, and myself.
I would propose that we, on page 358, strike the third, now therefore be it ordained, and I will come back and bring that as a second thing, and approve the other code changes tonight, and maybe even package the two-stroke thing in a bigger discussion about these boats in general. So we can at least move forward on the first two.
Mrs. Sidhu.
Yeah. I would like to say that actually you guys have been very modest, very modest, because, you know, we have laws about if you have a drinking well in your property, there's a law that you take 100 feet, draw a circle, you can park there, you can play there, you can do this, you can do this, you can do this. We have a law, you have a dog, you walk your dog, you have to have a bag in your hand, pick it up, right? And we all do that.
Supposed to.
You know, like, no, I mean, this is because of, these are the things, because they are hazard in different ways. And like, this is, when we talk about rights, somebody's rights, other rights, the rights come with a responsibility. Rights by itself don't exist. They don't have meaning. I have my right. I can drive on the left side of the road. I'm from India. I used to drive that, so I have my right, keep driving that way. But that's not my right I can have. You know, like, I think that we should have no motorized boats or anything. There are places of recreation. There's a Ross Lake. There's Vantage. There's Ocean. Go do all the wake you like to do and have recreation. I mean, this is somebody's drinking water. This is the water body we want to save for our kids and grandkids. People come from somewhere, have half an hour of fun and leave. Is that equates to the rights? What about the people who live there? I mean, you know, you don't like that somebody bring a cord of oil and dump it next to your water well. Would you like that? No, we don't. And, and same thing, like AIS, like erosion, safety of people, like, I forgot your name, that you can't even stand on your deck, or your kids on the deck, morning. You could be busy in the kitchen and kids on there, and wake comes in and kids fall into the lake. Is that recreation? Is that fun? I think that I would really like that we should have. You want to do recreation, get a canoe. Get paddles. Get three people in the boat, five people in the boat. Do all the, what you want to do, and do recreate. Go hike. We have such a beautiful place. Recreate. It's not like, you know, you, yeah, do your own power. You can't go get a 200-horse motor on a boat and you drive and you think you, I, okay. I'll stop there because I think, I think this is way too much. We are, we are not really protecting our own resources, the beauty we should be able to enjoy, and we want to erode it away, and then, you know, it's not even worth, even if somebody says, put $10,000 per half an hour, it's still not worth it. It shouldn't be there, period. Simple as that. So all the lakes, Lake Novera County, all the lakes are so small that they should not be allowed to do. Yes, they are good for recreation. Come, bring a canoe, do whatever you like to do. Otherwise, drive 50 miles, go to Columbia River, or Ross Lake, or other places, and Ocean. Okay, I'll stop there. I think I support this, and this is a no-brainer. We should have done it. We should have never started it, period. Thank you.
So, Mr. Donovan, I think you were trying to make a motion. Is that correct?
Yeah, my motion was that.
Why can't I, I had my hand up.
Because I'm after him, and he'd, he'd started talking, and I think for procedural reasons.
I was trying to make a motion, but that, I, I didn't get a second, but that we would delete the third, now therefore be it ordained, about code 1132, and we retain the changes to code 1116, 1120, and then I would bring back in our next meeting, code about 1132, and we could maybe talk about that.
I second.
That's, that's second, and so move in second, and now discussion, and then.
That's an amendment to the main motion.
Amendment to, amendment to the main motion. Now, I, I'm 100% in support of the objectives of this, but I would actually like to see us table this and bring it back for the following reasons. I don't think that the wake boat should be on, on any of the lakes, and there's two primary reasons. One is, citizens and the county will be paying for the damage caused by these, these vessels. The cost of trying to replace the, fix the road out there, I, I don't want to guess other, in anything less, I haven't seen it, but I'd have to assume it will be a large number, because if it's that close to the waterline, it'd probably require concrete foundations or something to repair it. But the bigger issue is this, is I don't see us having any way of being able to correctly order the boat for invasive species if the nature of the boat itself is to have a sealed tank in order, which you pump water into, to then create displacement. So I think from an AIS perspective alone, wake boats are not a suitable vehicle to be used on the lakes. And my personal, my, my, my request would be that we table this, bring it back with a prohibition on wake boats and also your two-stroke.
Does your motion supersede the motion I just got a second on?
It would, I guess it would. Actually, if I got a second on mine, it would. Yeah. So my motion to hold with, for that reason, if I had a second, would be up for debate. So I make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
I didn't understand.
I make, I make a motion that we hold this for two weeks, when we come back and include a prohibition for wake boats, and also include his section on two-stroke.
Once you put, you hold it, we're not allowed to, I got questions that I wanted to ask. You got to ask questions. You got.
Okay, I'm, I'm allowed to make a motion, Ms. Brenner, and my motion is.
Well, why don't you wait until people have asked their question?
Question, turn my motion.
That's kind of rude. Let her ask her question, then we can talk.
Well, I will withhold my motion until Ms. Brenner is satisfied her time.
Well, I'm not sure if it's Tyler Schroeder or John, I don't know who it would be. Does anybody have any updates for us on what kind of inspections are going on, how law, what the, what, how many per day, what's going on, and what happens to those public entrances to the water when, when there's no inspection people?
I do not have, I don't have a host of details about the scope of the, of the AIS program at, as it pertains specifically to Lake Samish, with the exception of the fact that I know that those, that those inspection stations are not, are not peopled with inspectors at all hours of the day as it is at Blodel Donovan Park. And, and I can tell you the reason for that is that there's a, a cost benefit associated with managing that program, and currently, the county is contributing somewhere along the order of 350-some thousand dollars a year towards what is largely a city-run program. We're partners in it, of course, the, the focus of the city is on Lake Watcom, and particularly in the south end of their lake. So the scope of the program isn't intended to, to fully envelop all of the accesses in, in Lake Samish. Of course, that conversation is much, much bigger than, than this public hearing, and it may be a good time in the near future for an update on the scope of that program if you're so inclined.
Did that fall under you?
Just, I'm not done yet. Just one quick question then. If, would we, could legally, if, if there's no inspectors there, could we close the public part of it?
You know, there are a whole host of questions that are running around in my mind.
Okay.
As to enforcement, obviously, the, the sheriff and his folks need to have some, have a conversation about what it takes to expand their enforcement, what you all might and what the community might expect from that enforcement, in terms of, in terms of what happened in the rollout of the program at Lake Watcom. That was before my time here. I think we, we do have some folks in the department that were part of that effort and could bring some, some information to light.
Mr. Bird, and then Mr. Donovan.
I thought that was like under the Sheriff's Department or Parks, but is this under Public Works?
No, the inspection program is, is managed by, our, our portion of the inspection program is managed by our Public Works Natural Resources. So, and I'm talking about the AIS inspection specifically.
That's what I was asking.
Mr. Donovan.
I, I guess I'll speak in favor of, of the motion, before the motion to table. The boating season is starting. This is kind of the low-hanging fruit in terms of moving the distance from shore and the speed limits, and I'd hope the, the two-stroke thing, but that we can fix. So the sooner we can get this stuff done, the better. That doesn't delay our ability to talk about the AIS thing and the, and the wake boats in terms of whether they should be banned or not. So I don't see why we would table this and slow it down when we can be doing two things at once. So I'm speaking against the motion to table and in favor of the motion to approve this as amended.
I'll make life easy. I'll withdraw my motion, because I concur with your view. Mr. Bird.
No, I, I agree with Councilmember Donovan. I, I think this, and those, that's, that's a much bigger topic that I think will drive a lot more conversation and input, and we will have to do a much better job of communicating that to the community so that they can participate in that conversation. So I, I'd like to see us move forward with this today.
Mr. Sidhu.
Yeah, I was going to say that we can start the conversation, because this season is already started. Maybe by next year, we should talk about not having any motorized, doesn't matter, two-stroke, four-stroke, six-stroke, it doesn't matter, not to have any motorized vehicle on Lake Watcom or Samish or any other lakes. I live next to Wiser Lake. It's a small lake, and I've seen wake boats there, you know, and just that sometimes the communities don't catch up with that and, and come to the council to talk about it. I think the lake size we have, we should just do a countywide thing and, and let people recreate with their own muscle.
Ms. Brenner. Put your hand up. No. So we're dealing with the motion to amend yours, so all in favor with the motion to amend, which was to strike the references to, to two-stroke, on, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Now we're back to the main motion, which is, any further discussion on the main motion, main ordinance. Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Carol Frazi.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
That passes 7-0, and then I'm keen to do the wakeboard language. Who, do you want to do that together, or?
Actually, while, while, so I hope people will think, because I'll come back, we do need to pick a date if there is interest, I hope, in doing the two-stroke ban, as is done in Watcom. How, what would the date be effective? So that's something to think about.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Are you asking for that tonight, or?
Well, I mean, I guess we can talk about this now, because it was on the agenda. Yeah, yeah, so either now or, but.
Do we have any idea how many boaters or two-stroke are out there that are using the lake? I mean, if there's one or two, then sooner is easier. If it's 200, then you're going to want to give them more time to educate a larger population, so.
I got one.
You got a two-stroke?
Oh, my. Oh, my.
Yes.
An 87 Yamaha three-horse.
For those citizens who want to know Mr. Donovan's home address is.
For the dinghy.
Chairman, if I might just clarify, the, the purpose of the original ordinance on Lake Watcom was to, was to ban a specific class of two-stroke engines that did not meet current EPA standards for the industry. And more, since that standard has been in place, the, the, that class of two-stroke motors is exempted from the ban. So what that means is that there, that contemporary two-stroke motors are not banned on Lake Watcom, and have been demonstrated to meet the, these elevated standards for emissions and pollution and those sorts of things. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, so that the effect really is on people like Mr. Donovan, who have a 1987 model that.
Only use it on the bank.
Yeah, that they may want to. Yeah, that they may want to putt around with.
Range, you can do it in the puddle.
You know, and so what the, what the, uh, the number of people who might be affected by that today, I, I don't really know, it's probably not a, a huge number. That said, I think it is important to keep in mind that we do owe some due diligence to the community of people who don't know about this law yet and will need to, one way or another, in, in a manner that we still have to work out, how we're going to do the outreach, who's going to be responsible for it, what that outreach looks like. And I think that's a conversation we also need to have in committee, uh, because it is going to cost money to do all of that outreach. And, uh, and we're going to have to take, whoever we is in this, uh, in this government, are going to have to take people off of what they're working on and direct them towards this new line of, uh, of public outreach. So that's not to say it can't be done, it just, I, what I'm suggesting is due diligence and some thoughtfulness in, in prosecuting that work is probably important.
Okay, so, Mr. Donovan, I shall commit to work with you, and I'll just ignore the fact that you're a nineteen-eighty-seven two-stroke boat.
I haven't used it in five years, but I still got one.
All right. Next item up is the open session, during the open session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for public hearing. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally include city of residence. Speakers should be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have thirty seconds left to conclude. And, um, I know, uh, Damon has been waiting patiently and also, what happened to Karen? She's coming back?
He didn't laugh.
No. Is she coming back?
I opened it.
No, he, she was with somebody.
I said to him, I was like, I told you guys were working on an ADA. I told you guys were working on an ADA president's plan. I didn't want to talk about the importance of having people with disability involved, um, not only in voting group, but also throughout the entire process, um, maybe hiring a consultant with a disability to make sure that the disability viewpoint is represented, because I find that a lot of times in planning buildings, edos, sidewalk, a lot of people, the disability voice is not included and is not designed in a way that what the people with disability in might meet requirements, but there's a lot of different ways to meet requirements. So they want to make sure that the disability voice is involved throughout the process of ADA president's plan.
So Damon, I just need you to state your name for the record.
I didn't want to get that one.
Then if I may ask, um, could you just describe the difficulty you had in getting into this building tonight?
Um, I got to the back door and the other door was not on. So I, I can't open doors on my own, so I let go and somebody walked by and I was able to get in. Um, I walked by the bathroom, I cannot hold the bathroom door open, that I was closing. And so I, if I needed to go to the bathroom here, I would have the app somewhere to hold the door, and I am unable to get in this room or out. If there was an emergency, I couldn't get out of there.
So the doors in, the doors in this room, the doors in our washroom, the closures are too strong for you to overcome?
Yeah.
Yes?
So, I didn't want to be more involved in making the way that we do in the county, especially our ADA president's plan, have people with disability involved at all levels throughout the process, because if you wait till the voting group or don't include people in the priorities, uh, it's probably not gonna have the impact you want.
And, and then if I could ask, um, you run a business for which, uh, Karen is also employed, and perhaps you could just describe that business for us?
Yeah, so I started a company called Abilatrick, and we do accessibility consulting and well, and we built a platform kind of like Yelp, but with people with disability, where you can reach all the different areas of accessibility, because we believe that accessibility is not one side at all, but the abilities of people with disabilities are very unique. And when they say acceptable, we never really know what that means.
And then in your professional experience, uh, how often do you see professional, able-bodied, uh, ADA specialists make mistakes or miss things that would, that, that you are unable to overcome because of your limitations?
Uh, I think it's a lot. Um, one of my go-to examples is at the university, at Miller Hall, when they redo Miller Hall, they added steps to a door that did not need steps, and that where our ink car, don't you come out that door on that ink car on ice in a wheelchair, you are going down the stairs. And when I asked the project manager later why they did that, they said, oh, no one told us about that. And I'm like, yeah, that's why we need people with disability involved at every step.
And, and the companies you're consulting for now include, uh, some fairly well-known names, as I understand it?
One of the largest multinational that's changed is one of my clients, and I have done with a lot of the big banks and bigger companies in my career as well, and I worked with, they do a couple of things with that book.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Bird?
I'm gonna open it up.
Yep.
Bob Bird, Bellingham. Since I was here two weeks ago, as is typical of most two-week periods these days, we got further reminders of the rapid pace at which we are headed towards mass extinction of species, including our own. We are in the midst of a rapidly accelerating climate emergency, and it is time to recognize it as such. In the United States, we had twelve straight days of eight or more tornadoes, a new record. Oklahoma and Arkansas have been victims of the worst flooding in their history. Midwestern farmers are in huge trouble because their fields were underwater during the normal planting season. More and more local governments are stepping up and showing the courage to declare a climate emergency. Two weeks ago, the number of government bodies that had declared a climate emergency was five hundred and twenty-six. Today, it is five hundred and ninety-six. Two weeks ago, only thirteen cities in the United States had declared a climate emergency and zero in the state of Washington. Now, there are eighteen cities and counties in the United States that have declared such an emergency, but still nada in Washington. I have provided you with templates for drafting a resolution declaring a climate emergency. Have you read them? What do you think? Have you had any discussions about declaring a climate emergency? How do you individually stand on such a declaration and why? Since you rarely respond to public comments, I will email you these questions and use your replies as the basis of my remarks two weeks from now. Your constituents need to know that there is a climate emergency and that you recognize it, and a declaration will remind you to prioritize the impact of climate and ecosystems in all of your decisions. Finally, I urge you all to go to the Climate Advisory Group that you have commissioned. Their meeting is next Thursday, this coming Thursday, upstairs at Resources.
I'm Mary Hess, and I am at seven-seventeen West Lake Samish, Bellingham, Washington. I've been a, uh, I've lived in Watcom County for twenty-seven years, and, um, Sat Paul, uh, we've worked together for many years at, on the Northwest Clean Air Advisory Council. And, um, I've worked with quite a few people here, staff specifically, over the years in my job. Um, one of the things that I participated in years ago was, uh, Water Quality Review Board for, um, for Watcom, Lake Watcom. And, uh, at that point in time, Sat Paul, we did look at, um, stopping the use of engines on the lake, on Lake Watcom at that time. And, um, with the changes in engines and the reduction in emissions of engines, I think it was pretty much tabled at that time in the Environmental Committee that we would not go forward with a resolution. So I'm just giving you a little bit of that history. But, um, but I am very concerned about Lake Samish's water quality, you know, enough for us to try and form a group of watershed watchers. So we are going to be coming forward with more information for the council so that you guys can make decisions. The quagmaws is a big deal, it's, uh, it could affect everyone's drinking water intakes on the lake if even one larva gets into the lake. So that is why I am so adamant about banning the wake boats, because they, they have been, um, proven to be the source of transfer in, uh, many lakes throughout the Midwest and now moving west. So the concern is great, and, uh, I, I just really want us to do more about water quality. I'm also concerned about the lack of monitoring that we do on Lake Samish, um, whether it's county health or who has that responsibility, we have been investigating it, and it's very unclear. So, uh, obviously, the city of Bellingham does Lake Watcom investigations through Western Washington University, and we would like to see at least something done qual, water quality-wise, because I don't think anybody's looked at the lake since two thousand and eleven, as far as sampling goes. So that's just me.
Thirty seconds, please.
I just wanted to let you know that this is coming, I want you to be aware, and know that we will support you with a lot of great technical backup. Thank you very much.
Ms. Brenner?
I just have one quick question. When you send us that information, would you let us know, you guys get your water from the lake, what kind of process does it go through?
So we all treat through the surface water process that's required by the state of Washington Department of Health.
I believe that, but I don't know anything about it, could you just, when, when you let us know?
Sure, sure, I can tell you about it, I'm a P E in the state, and I've designed these systems, so yes.
That'd be very helpful, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Please proceed and state your name again.
Hi, Mike Hess, seven-one-seven, West Lake Samish Drive. If I show up for the aquatic, if I show up at the D and R boat launch with my canoe or my fishing boat, the Aquatic Invasive Species Inspector will pull me out of line if there's water in my boat or if there's a damp surface until I get it dried out and he can do his inspection. If someone pulls up in a wakeboard boat with a ballast tank, most likely they will get a pass because there's no easy way to drain that tank and dry that tank. For a boat that costs, they start at over a hundred thousand dollars, and I've seen them for over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, perhaps a simple filter may take care of the problem, and perhaps that's something you want to consider.
Uh, good evening, council, my name is Ken Domarod, District Two, taxpayer and voter. Uh, for the people at home, a reminder that the camera adds at least twenty pounds, it's not ten. Um, I want to start out by thanking the, the county council, um, I've been going to some city and count, uh, county council meetings for about a month now, and, um, I've noticed that at the, these meetings, it's refreshing to see you guys focusing on issues that are actually pertinent to the county and not being distracted by national issues, um, as is typical of the city. So I appreciate you guys staying focused and staying committed to the, uh, to the needs of your constituents. I do want to speak further about the, uh, the annexation proposal for the city of Alderwood, and, uh, I'm a full-time, uh, I'm employed full-time, I work forty or sixty hours a week, I go to school part-time, uh, try to catch up on, I have a, a ten-year, uh, associate's degree eventually. Um, so I don't have a lot of time to commit to research, I'm not a lawyer, uh, so everything I'm sharing now is just information that I'm kind of getting. And I guess that, um, I'm stating that because I want to reiterate the importance of the resources that the county council has as opposed to the constituents and time and staff and finances and, uh, legal resources to try to get this information and share it with the people of, of this, uh, the community of Alderwood that may be impacted by this annexation. And, uh, Councilman Brown and, uh, Ms. Brenner, I appreciate your phone call, thank you. Uh, Councilman Brown, I do want to say, um, you had said at the last, uh, meeting that I addressed the council, that, uh, annexation happens with the vote of the people, which is true, and one of the methods of annexation. However, the city of Bellingham has stated that they're using the, using the inter-local agreement method of annexation, uh, which actually does not result in a vote of the people. It does result in the vote of the Watcom County Fire District Commissioners, it results, um, by the vote of the, uh, Bellingham City Council and by the Watcom City Council, or County Council. Um, and the interesting thing about it is that if the county council votes no and the other two parties vote yes, the annexation does not move forward. If the county council votes yes and the city council votes yes and the fire district votes no, the annexation does move forward. So you guys are actually the deciding vote. Um, and based on the way the law is written, um, I was, there's still some question as to whether or not we have appeal rights, uh, through a referendum, uh, because there's a cutoff date in two thousand and thirteen where, um, if a, a motion to move forward at the annexation was filed before two thousand and thirteen and you don't, then you do have or do not have referendum rights, but after two thousand and thirteen you do. Those are the things I haven't spent enough time at the law library or understanding. Um, but I think it reiterates the importance of getting all of the parties involved into one room in a town hall to start these discussions and get a consensus and clarity on what each individual.
Thirty seconds, please.
Party's vision of how this is going to go down is. And to give the community an honest-to-God representation of the way that this is going to move forward and what the city has to offer and why we should or should not support it, because we still have not gotten that. And I think you guys have a lot more power in this method of annexation than you actually would in a direct petition or in a voting, uh, method. And I think that that being brought to your attention, I do ask, and, and not to say that you have not been responsive to requests, I do ask that you, um, maybe start to try to facilitate that conversation with the city and maybe start to push to get a location and a time and a date to have that conversation. Thank you for your time and attention, have a great evening.
Could you leave your phone number again?
Yes.
Thanks.
If there's no one else who wishes to speak after Mr. Perry, we'll close you up in public session.
Uh, Max Perry, Watcom County, and I just want to thank you guys for your robust, uh, discussion this morning on, on, at, uh, as a council, the whole, on, on apprenticeship and, uh, the need for that, and there is a real need for it. But we have, uh, the same problem at, at, at our little business, it's a small business, we have about thirty-five people that we employ. We have about thirty-five people that we employ, but we have to go through six people to get one that tests drug-free. So marijuana, opioids, that's a real critical problem to the young people, and it looks like with the homeless, to the older people too, maybe. So anyway, it's something that's here, and it's going to have to be addressed. I don't know where these young people go that can't pass a drug test. They just, they just can't do it. So anyway, I think it's important to look at them. We're presently, you think of a pellet company as being hard labor, and it is, and there's a lot of labor to it, but there's, we've got two women that are starting to work for us, two young, two young girls, and they're doing fine. They're doing excellent. And there's some things that they don't do, the same thing as a husky man can do as far as dissembling pellets and tearing them apart, but they do a good job in certain things that they can do. The other thing is, I think the apprenticeship, I've got a twenty-year-old grandson that's just begun with All-American Marine a couple months ago, three, four months ago. He worked for Prairie Pellet. He cut his teeth on building pellets on it, so he knows how to work. And All-American Marine appreciates him, and he's got a couple advancements on it, and he's going to community college and has the desire to go to Western and complete his engineering management type of thing is what he's thinking about. So apprenticeship is important. Apprenticeship is meaningful, but there also has to be addressed this prevalence with marijuana, the prevalence with opioids. It's ruining a lot of young lives before they even get started. So thank you.
If there's no one else after Carol Perry, we'll close you up in public session.
Carol Perry, Waukam County. I didn't know exactly what Max was going to say, so I'll have to try to, to, I did appreciate your committee meeting this afternoon. I know it was a long day. I think it was quarter to five before you got out of here. And I appreciated the attitudes and the back and forth and how you came up with, I think, a healthy direction for the community. I especially saw how you were enriched by allowing a couple people to speak that had real knowledge about apprenticeship, as well as even you, the council, have a lot of experience in that. And I wanted to get up and say something, but it was late. But I've been in several meetings in the last couple of weeks, maybe three weeks, month, where there's business people, and there is some sort of a program, and I can't, I don't know whether it comes from the port or where, but businesses are being challenged, and they're coming up to the challenge to encourage young people about getting into the trades. And some real encouraging results, and Max mentioned All-American Marine, and our grandson Roscoe is just, he's just flying. He's so encouraged. He's learning aluminum welding, I think, and they're giving him all sorts of opportunities. And he's just, he said, "I'm learning from those guys, and I'm getting more hours, and I'm putting money away for education." And, you know, it's really encouraging. Really, what I wanted to talk to you was about the drought contingency plan and the water supply plan. Here's another area where you need to pull in people from the community. There's people in this community that have worked in the field of water for years. They're experts. They're just, they're just citizens, and a lot of, I've seen a lot of this in the planning unit. The Watershed Management Act provided a way for all stakeholders to have a voice. And myself, as well as a lot of others, feel like public input is being squelched. Water decisions are coming from
Thirty seconds, please.
Not from Waukam County people, but from the Puget Sound Partnership because they dangle money and they supply people to, well, the LIO, and I don't know how much you know about that, but please take time about the drought contingency plan, the water supply plan. And there is a legal way for water stakeholders to take part. And I myself think that if the tribes were at the table, we were told by DOE that Waukam County is way ahead of other counties in the state by a DOE person, and that our watershed, our update was better than the squally.
From the planning unit?
So I'm over.
All right. Well, that will close the public, open public session. I'm going to go to finance.
All right. So we have item one through six, the consent agenda, they received three zero vote and I so move for approval, item one through six.
Mrs. Sado, I would like to ask for item two to be separated.
Okay. I will move item one, three, four, five, and six for approval.
And move for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, those pass seven zero.
Okay. I move item number two as a separate item, and I so move for approval. Any discussion?
It's been moved for approval. Discussion? I would like to speak against voting on this tonight. I would like to hold it for two weeks, and the reason is I would like to give the ADA community, members of the ADA community, time to come and testify and ensure themselves that, and satisfy themselves that they are being well represented in this. That's my request. Ms. Brenner.
I support it, but I, I'm also, shouldn't we make sure that these kinds of things go through the ADA participant community before it even comes to us?
I'm perfectly fine with that as well.
Okay. Because I was surprised to find out that there aren't, you know, people with disabilities helping to make those, the decisions.
Mr. Burden, then myself.
I'm, I'd like to know if that, if it did, but I'd also like to know what John has to say.
I'm not exactly sure where to, how to start this conversation, except to perhaps offer a thought, Councilmember Brown, that, you know, first of all, it is public works' intention to, and as reflected in the, in the transpo contract, to do exactly that. And throughout the contract, there are, there are references to, to making that engagement. And I, I think that you make a very, very good point that perhaps as that contract is put together and as, and as interaction with, with groups of, of people who have that interest in making sure, like the young man that was up here earlier, trying to remember his name off of hand, Damon, that perhaps we have not, as an institution, done a good enough job of creating an environment in which we can do that. And I guess I would offer to you that as this, you know, if we can move this contract further, my commitment to you would be to work with you and our department to create that body, and we could do, there are a number of different ways in which we could bring those people together to play a meaningful role in carrying forward this particular year-long contract. Keeping in mind that the contract itself is for the purpose of, the purpose of unveiling all of the deficiencies in our already-built environment. So anything new that's getting built is being built to current ADA standards. Now, whether those are sufficient or not is another conversation. It's really about retrofitting the existing environment. And we need to know where those deficiencies are first and then understand what it is we're doing today internally to remedy those deficiencies. And I would suggest to you that it's not enough, so we need to know what the state of affairs is today and then prioritize, and knowing, know then what there is in the way of solutions to those kinds of engineering retrofit problems that are available to us, so what toolbox we have to work with, and then ultimately do the prioritizing that we talked about earlier. And those are things that this particular, that were written into the request for qualifications that we ended up, like the transpo group. I think that we perhaps can meet both of those needs over the course of the year by keeping the transpo contract moving forward and then exercising some more work, perhaps with you directly and our department, to make sure that we have alongside that the appropriate overview. And then there are places written into the contract where that information gets fed into the work that they're doing.
So first of all, I'm absolutely pleased that we're doing the contract, but, and I, unfortunately, you're obviously dealing with another issue when Mr. Wonkey was speaking, but, and I just encourage you to listen to the video after that, but I would have, normally I would have thought this building was ADA compliant. Mr. Wonkey cannot get into this building. He cannot get into the bathroom. I, two weeks ago, at the last council meeting, I came in at six o'clock at night, and the automatic, the handicap door switch up there didn't work. So I contacted facilities and said it needs to get fixed. I come in tonight, it still doesn't work. Now, from an able-bodied perspective, it's not really an issue for somebody like Mr. Wonkey. It's the difference between being able to participate with his government or not. He can't even open this door up here. He can't get out this door. The young woman he was with couldn't even get up the ramp because it's too steep. And he explained that there's a, they'd recently built a set of stairs at Western that he says under the, under ice conditions is lethal to someone like him, literally lethal, because he can't control his wheelchair down there, and he'll hit, he'll hit a ramp, which will then go down a set of stairs. So I appreciate your intent. I have no question about your intent, and I appreciate your desire to move this ball forward. I'm going to still ask that we delay because I want to give Mr. Wonkey's community an opportunity, adequate time to come here and testify and make sure that we're asking the right questions, because we can spend the money with this contract, and at the end of the day, if we're not asking the right questions, many of which I would not even assume to ask, because I don't, don't deal with this stuff every day. I want to make sure we're asking the right questions, and I, and I don't, unless you can tell me there's something crucial as to why we can't wait two weeks to give public notice and give an opportunity for that community to come in here and talk to us, read the contract, and make everybody aware of what the issues are, I would like to ask that we hold this for two weeks.
Well, let me just, let me just suggest there is nothing crucial. I think that, that it's your discretion, obviously, to, to put this off for a couple of weeks, and I don't think it's going to be the end of the world. That said, we, of course, have, we're motivated by, by a number of things to do this work. First of all, it's the right thing to do to identify these, these problems with our system. The other thing, of course, is to make sure that we don't allow this to drag on too long because this work needs to be done in order for us to demonstrate to those, those bags of money in the sky that, that we're taking seriously federal law and so that we don't get at odds with, with the federal government in terms of our ADA program. And keep in mind that this, which I'm sure you all are very aware, that this is focused on right-of-way, not other facilities just right-of-way. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, you were saying that you wanted to give us, you know, have some interaction. Did you say with us or just with Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah.
I would like to.
That's a fair question, and I mean the council as a whole. I know that, that Councilmember Brown has a particular interest in so, you know, doing some problem-solving with that, that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add one thing, then, Mr. Sado. Damon, I met Damon several years ago, the first time, and Damon taught me a valuable lesson, which was that we're, we are not able-bodied. We are temporarily able-bodied. If we live long enough, we will reach a point where we're no longer able-bodied. And so this is not just about, you know, someone like Mr. Wonkey, who's obviously lived with us since birth, it's for all of us ultimately, if we're fortunate enough to live long enough. So I think we all have a vested interest in this. Mr. Sado?
Yeah. Now, this is, the way I was reading it, it's about right-of-way, and second thing is, it's identifying what needs to get done, but nothing will be built with this money, right? This is, this is, is, and you're right, we need to ask the right questions, but then it's going to be, the issue is, do we have money to do whatever the recommendations are, right? So it's, it's a long process, could take several years, even if we identify that this building and other building and this road and crossings on the streets and everything need to be fixed. This is just identifying that. And then we have to find money to be able to do that. So I really like that there should be an engagement and somehow if we can create a committee that when all these work schedule is shared with them, that this is what they are looking at, twenty different things, and ADA community should look at and put their concerns in. Waiting two weeks, like John said, is not the end of the world. We should wait two weeks and get their input, and it's not one-time input. I would rather have them engaged throughout the whole year as they produce their documentation or identifying what the issues are, and then they can add on to those issues, right? Of course, then we'll be prioritizing and money, and all those things will come later.
Mr. Burden.
John, a couple of questions, just for my sake. Defining right-of-way as it pertains to this, what are we exactly talking about?
So we are talking about public rights of way for a variety of transportation purposes. So that would be, that basically our roads, our transportation system.
Not necessarily inside the buildings.
Exactly. It's not inside the buildings at all. That was my
It's all right-of-way.
Yeah.
So, and then as it relates to that, most of our conversation in committee revolved around a certain level of expertise needed and required. It seems like this now is more about identifying issues as they pertain to that user group. So can you tell me, like, where's the expertise required? It does seem like Damian might have a better expertise in identifying those issues than having someone else come in to figure out how to solve them.
Yeah, so that's, that's a very interesting question that I would like some time to think about. That said, though, I do have some, some immediate, an immediate response, and that is that we're in this sort of strange place where we have a body of federal law that requires certain standards to be met for the construction of facilities and, of facilities. And, and those standards came in after many of the facilities were put into place, and we, under the law, were required to make certain improvements to meet those standards, and most jurisdictions are behind. And in fact, the federal government is behind in, in pursuing or enforcing the American with Disabilities Act. And so in order to turn the screws to state and local governments, they have required that each local jurisdiction put together a plan that identifies where those, where those that identifies where those, where those facilities that don't meet, yeah, that aren't meeting standards, and disclose those, and then come up with a plan for remedying those deficiencies. And so that's what this is all about. And in the first instance, in application, as Chairman Brown has pointed out, there's a whole lot more to think about. And the question of how big we make the umbrella before we start working on the, on the ADA as it relates to our road program is something that I want to be real careful about. I certainly don't want to get so far down the road in time that we lose the opportunity to at least identify, disclose, and do all of those things we're required to do under federal law.
All of a project where that is applicable? Just so I have some context to what.
Can I think of a project?
Or is there an area of specific concern that we've run into?
Yeah, so, well, some good examples are, I mean, just right outside the door here, there are curb cuts that have a certain material on them so that they, so that wheelchairs can easily move into the, into the crosswalk and across the road. And then the signals themselves have, have audible signal associated with them. We don't have those everywhere out in rural Lockham County. And so, you know, in, in areas that have been urbanized since those sidewalks maybe were first put in, and a, in a development that was thought was going to go forward in 1982 or something, wouldn't have those, those facilities in place. And so that's an example where there might be a deficiency.
So are we actually required then to have that everywhere within the county, regardless of like density?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what the, what the, what the box is that we will have to work in. What I do know is we have to disclose, and we have to have a plan for remedying, prioritizing remedying those. I can, certainly as this conversation goes forward, we'll have more expertise to bring. And, and the Transpo Group was hired specifically because they've had success in Skagit County and other places recently doing the similar kind of work.
Are you able to share what their approach, what kind of approach they're taking to that problem?
Can I share what kind of approach? I mean, the scope of work has, so the answer's yes. I'm just going to read it right out of the scope of work. The consultant work program is organized in the following tasks. Beyond project management, it's evaluation of existing burial removal practices. So what are we doing today to remove those barriers? Stakeholder engagement. Data, self-assessment data collection. That is, understanding what our environment, our ADA environment is today. An implementation schedule, and then a plan for addressing that schedule. And there's more detail about how they intend to do that. But the important point is under task two, that talks about evaluation of existing burial removal practices that specifically includes a number of guidelines and road standards that, that they will consider, that must be considered, including our own development standards. The access boards ADA accessibility guidelines, the access board's most recent revised draft, public right-of-way accessibility guidelines, National Cooperative Highway Research Program Report on ADA Transition Plans, and a Related Guide to Best Management Practices. So there's guidance out there for how one develops and implements such a plan from a technical standpoint. That's not what Mr. Brown is talking about.
Gone through that development disabilities board? Have they kind of, have they reviewed this agreement?
No, they haven't reviewed this agreement. So they establish the guidelines and the standards by which this review must be done. And we don't, don't retain the expertise internally to, to do that work. We don't have the knowledge in our own department to bring that information to the analysis. So we contract out to those people who have that.
Earlier, you mentioned that there might be some way to have both parties work together as we move it forward. It sounds like this group may be a good fit for helping to identify the areas that we need to bring, where we have deficits, and that were required by federal code to meet. Is there then that opportunity to bring Damon in with his group? When you, once you've identified those areas, to figure out if there are options that they could be better improved as we start looking at those improvements? Tyler, standing up as well.
Well, you can come down, Tyler. We don't bite.
Yeah. Yeah, so task three is the public outreach. And there's a number of, let's see, where's the general online targeted focus and advisory committee. So it talks about the creation of, of focus groups. And it's in, says, I mean, it's in the writing here. Focus groups can provide a better, deeper understanding of the factors that the disabled community finds important to updating the pedestrian areas in the county, as well as better understanding the main barriers in the pedestrian areas. Our job is to assist Transpo in holding focus group meetings in an accessible location. Support participants will be recruited through county contacts, including ADA community groups, groups representing senior citizens, those expressing an interest in participating from online public meetings and, and other, other stuff. So that, that stakeholder recognition and the prospect of actually having an advisory committee that is populated by, by folks who are users of our, our ADA facilities is certainly consistent with what's already in this contract. It's on us, though, to take those next steps and make sure that that happens.
I'll speak in favor of this because I do feel like having a group that has the expertise of going through the process and identifying those areas that we have deficits, and being able to then bring in another group that then can help them improve upon how we go about fixing those deficits. I think that that is a nice relationship that will help get us further. I do think it's important that as we work to meeting these needs that are put upon us as far as requirements by the feds, that we have a group with experience that can help, that can accurately identify what all of those issues are, or at least where all those bottlenecks are. And I do like the approach. If John could put special emphasis on ensuring that we have a group of individuals that can come in then, once those areas have been identified, and work through what solutions we should be implementing to solve them. I think that answers the question as far as what we have to do for the federal government, but also answers the question about how we do it in a way that is equitable to, to all parties and, and thought through and thoughtful at the same time. So that would be where I am at this point with the conversation.
So I would still like to, my, my motion is to hold this for two weeks and to hold a public hearing that would be advertised to members of the disabled community, the community, to come and testify, in part because.
They can get in here.
Yeah. Well, I have to make a combination to, for them to get in here. Because I would have, if you'd asked me, if you'd asked me two weeks ago, was this, was this an ADA-compliant building accessible to people with disabilities? I would have said, sure, of course it is. I see the elevator out there. I see, you know, the, the doors that you can push. And, and here I have, I've got someone who's, who works in this field all the time. He can't get in and out of the building. But just a quick question. As an engineer, what do you think the slope is behind you on that walkway up there?
Well, let's be clear that I'm not qualified to make that determination because I'm not an engineer. But it's clearly more than the young lady in the wheelchair could manage.
And my only point is, let's say it's a 10-degree slope. I'll just pick a number. If, if, and then we work out that we've got, you know, footpath transitions between footpaths and streets. And, and the ADA limit is 10%. This is, oh, that's ADA-compliant if it's 10%. It may be ADA-compliant, but if we took it down to, say, 5%, extended the grinding a little bit further just to, to weaken the slope a bit, now we've made it something that actually can, can do it. I've, in my conversations with Damon in the past, he has talked to me about new, brand-new hotels he's stayed in, which are obviously, which advertise themselves as ADA-compliant rooms. And I've stayed in some of those hotels. And as he's pointed out to me, they may be ADA-compliant, they don't work. And that's part of the, so that's what I want to do. I want to give the community an opportunity to tell us, yes, you may hire someone who brings this up to ADA compliance, but it doesn't work, and this is what they need to look at when they're doing it. So I just want to give them the opportunity. So, Mr. Doh.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Does there anything wrong with moving? So, I mean, I don't see any need to rush this for two weeks. But two weeks from now, I want to approve this contract. So is this a separate thing that we're thinking about doing? Where we're going to be doing more beyond what's in the contract in section three in terms of stakeholder engagement or support? So I guess I'm trying to, like, what are we accomplishing by delaying the contract that we can't just do simultaneously or separately?
To me, it's respectful to the ADA, to the, the community that suffers from these disabilities every day. To me, it's respectful to give them that opportunity to comment on it before we award the contract.
And I guess at minimum, I hope, like, that's an opportunity to figure out how we incorporate or refine what the targeted focus group advisory committee would be. I'm like, I just want to be specific about what we're expecting people to be commenting on because we can't change the contract. So it's like, all right, what do we, what do we want to hear from? It's like, how do we do two outreach events? How, you know, how do we do these surveys? How do we?
Oh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Frakes. We can refuse to approve this contract. And so we don't want to approve this contract, period. But we do want to put out a different contract for bid for which this applicant has the opportunity to bid if they wish. Is that correct?
Well, let, let me ask a question, if I might, just for clarification. Is, because there's, what the county does as part of our relationship with this consulting group, which is lined out in here, that doesn't prevent the county from doing more than that.
Right.
Right? This, that it just specifies, in support of the work that we're asking the Transpo Group to do, we will put them in touch with the focus groups and develop, if we wish, an advisory committee to help vet the information that they are developing. So there's nothing that prevents, for example, the council holding a hearing for the purpose of, of listening to the community's input on the prospect of creating an advisory committee for the purpose of helping us through this contract. That might be something that would, that would actually solve a couple of problems all at once. Because at some point, we're going to want to contemplate the existence of, am I really saying we need another advisory committee? A way for this particular community to have input on the likes of this, the work that we're doing here today. So that conversation is probably ripe.
Ms. Frakes, I did ask you a question, so maybe you want to answer that question?
Well, I, I don't know the history of this particular contract, but in general, that's why these contracts come before you. So you can either approve them or not approve them.
Right. Right, thank you. And if I, sorry, I will yield the floor in a second. If I, at the end, you know, if we have a hearing in two weeks, all that may come out of it is, is a, is a, is a general consensus from, from those who suffer with these disabilities every day, that we are on the right track, and we should approve the contract, we should go ahead. And that may well be the outcome. I'm not, but I just think it is such a matter of courtesy for something. For this group lives with these issues every day. It's literally the difference between whether someone can come in here and pay their taxes, or vote, or register to vote, or speak in front of us, or get stuck outside in the rain. Because our building is not compliant enough for them to be able to access it. And so I just think as, as a, very much at this level of government, we have to demonstrate that we're, we're offering them the opportunity to be heard on an issue that affects them every moment of their lives, and that's it. I just, I think it's the courteous thing to do. Mrs. Sado, then Mr. Bird, then Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I, I think the intentions, everything is, is good and right to, if we are doing work for certain community to facilitate, they should be part of this solution. But at the same time, when we do a public hearing, the, the subject of ADA is huge. I think what I read in this thing is, it is as related to the transportation part of it. What we are bringing it in is how to enter a building or a bathroom and all those things. While these are good, but when you ask question for people to come and testify, how you are going to make sure that majority of the disabilities are present? Like, we could have 10 people, but there are probably 5,000 different disabilities people have, right? So, I mean, you know, what, what I'm saying is, is yes, it is a right intention. And I rather see them involved throughout the year when they do that. First, their scope of work is very limited. It is not like, we're going to make county ADA and look at every aspect of ADA. It's not, that, that is not the intent here. That's how I read it. It's, it's very limited scope to get in compliance with federal laws so that if we apply for money, even when we identify, we have to ask for money. If you are, you haven't done this work, you can't even make an application. But would it include everything needed for every ADA person? And, and what we will have them testify for to their particular needs? It's, it's really very, very huge. Even 5,000 may not be the right number. That how many ways we can convenience a disability? And, and another thing is going far and beyond. How far you go far and beyond? There's a law, there's a federal ADA law, and, and then there is a state ADA law. Then when we say that, okay, let's go far and beyond. I mean, don't take me wrong, I'm just trying to analyze which, which way we are heading, right? And, and then, how do you define that? The, the, the minimum threshold is, is do we meet the ADA? That's all, when we say this building, somebody came and approved this building to the ADA-compliant, which to you and me, it's not ADA-compliant. But this did get a certificate or, or occupancy certificate to occupy the building, being an ADA-compliant building, right? So I, I'm just saying that actually getting them involved throughout the whole year would be more meaningful and more revealing than saying, but in two weeks, we will know everything. I mean, I don't mind waiting for two weeks, it's not a big deal, you know? But what do we know more in two weeks is, is my question.
Mr. Bird, Mr. Doh, sorry, Mr. Bird, Ms. Brenner, and myself.
If you have more questions and you want more time and input on this, I will support that because I do argue that all the time. And so, I mean, it'd be critical for me to tell you that we have to push it through. It's, it's one of my.
I pushed one of your buttons, did I?
No, it is. Yeah, it's, it's the thing that you, they fight about all the time. And so, I mean, I 100% support that if you feel like that's something you, you need. So I will support you in that if you want to move forward. I will say that I want to be careful about what we set for expectations, if that's the case. Because I don't want everyone to come forward and think that we're going to do these huge projects that will be impacting the courthouse and all of our, our county facilities. In reality, it's a couple of crossroads that they may never use in their lifetime out in the middle of the county that none of us are probably going to ever use, right? I think that we need to set expectations about what it is that we're really talking about and doing. I think that when we are looking at what we have to do, we all know we have a very finite budget that we're already struggling with, with supplemental budget requests and overages six months into a two-year budget. So we can't do everything. It's going to be important that we get a group that has experience in identifying the issues that we're going to be legally liable for, so that we can fix those issues. Being able to bring another group. Being able to bring another group forward that can advise us on the best way to fix those issues, I think is a wise way to move forward. If you're suggesting that there's another opportunity, maybe, for this building to have a group come in and identify issues, and then be able to prioritize which ones we might be able to squeeze in here and there as different budget items come in under and the budget becomes available, that would be a separate topic and something else that I think that we, many of us would support as well. The, I do think that having that group with the experience of identifying the issues is important. And I'll just reiterate that if we do hold it for two weeks, that whoever comes forward to speak, that we're very clear about what it is that we are looking for from that group, so that we're not getting their hopes up about, or their expectations up and then letting them down, so.
Brenner.
Well, it almost seems like that we've got two separate issues. And this one is about the outdoors rights of way. And that the other issue, which I think is extremely important, is the one of physical access into the county courthouse. To me, that is so important. But they do seem, with this thing, they're very separate issues. So, what we could do is pass this and still have a hearing on the other thing in two weeks. I want to get, I want to get both things done. But I really, the other issue to me is so important. To me, it's a hu, it's a, even though it's only about a courthouse, it really is about a whole bunch of stuff in this courthouse that's going to be very difficult. So, I would just like to see them, to put in the words of Dan Warner, bifurcated, maybe. Yeah, and we do this, and then we also do that. I kind of had thought, when you were speaking, that you, that you felt like this was all part of the courthouse thing too, but it's really not. So, can't we do both and separate them, but be, do them both as quick as possible?
So, to be clear, I understand this is not about buildings. The only reason I referred to the courthouse is because we're here tonight, we had someone come to testify. And to me, it was just such a visual example of the insurmountable obstacles that were presented to this person without assistance.
Well, I might have misunderstood you. I just felt like what you were saying was that this courthouse was part of this.
No, 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 I'm not. I'm just, I'm saying the courthouse is part of our overall problem, but it's not part of this contract. But it serves as an example. I'll tell you, say two short things. One is, some of the things that we can do, by the way, will probably be no-cost items, and I'll give you an example. I asked two weeks ago for that switch to be fixed there. It hasn't made it up through the list of being important enough for someone to come and fix it. One of the things we could simply say is ADA issues, where they need to be at the front of the line. I mean, things like that. If it's fixing the switch, fix it, because for two weeks now, anybody who's needed it can't get it.
Actually, it's been a lot longer than two weeks. I remember a couple of months ago, just hitting it because I had a whole bunch of stuff and it didn't, nothing happened.
So, there's other things of that. And the other thing too is, I'm just shocked and disappointed that you're not an engineer. I thought you were.
He can actually communicate with us. He's a communicator.
So, any further discussion on the motion to hold for two weeks, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I might just add that if we're going to invite people forward, then maybe what we invite them forward to do is participate in a conversation about, once the issues have been identified, how we would be able to address those with their support or their expertise. Or maybe that's the conversation we're having, is saying, we're going to find a bunch of issues, but we want you to help us with the solutions to those issues.
Absolutely. And I just want to be clear, the main thing I want to ask, I want to give them the courtesy of participating before we issue the contract. And the second thing is, I want to invite them to make sure we're asking the right questions. I agree with you, we cannot promise the moon and say everything's going to be fixed in a year, because there's never, there's never enough good, there's never enough money for all good works, for anything. But I think that's the least we can do, is that, show them the respect of giving them the opportunity to participate, as opposed to what we all tend to do is saying, well, we think we know what the answers are, we'll just do it anyway. So.
I don't do that.
Well, I think as a society, we tend to do that. I'm being a bit generalistic. Ms. Frasey.
Yeah, I also want to be respectful. I mean, you said Damon has a business. And I, I mean, if we're consulting with him too, I want him to be clear that, right now, the money is going to the transpo group. And that, you know, we're kind of asking him for free advice. So, we have to be respectful of the business part of it, too.
And perhaps I could, I could offer one request, that we don't make the contract itself the subject of the public hearing.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I meant, yeah.
Which is problematic, right? Because we've entered into, we've entered into a, we've negotiated a price with this company to do a scope of work that we developed and put out. If we want to change the scope of work and re-contemplate the costs with them, if they're willing, we can certainly do that. There's nothing that prevents that. But it seems inappropriate to have a public hearing over whether or not you decide to move this particular contract.
I agree.
Yeah.
We could do both.
And for, and sorry, Ms. Donovan, I'll yield to you.
Well, as I understand the motion, it's to move this off the consent agenda, have a public hearing with the option of voiding the contract. That seems to be the discussions going. I'd abstain from that. I mean, I think we can do two things.
Separately.
Parallel, yeah.
Parallel, separate and parallel.
So, I guess, how do we do that, then, is the question? Like, how do we get discussion that we need to have that you're talking about? I mean, I can wait two weeks on this, but I, right now, it seems like the way the public hearing would be going, and this is sort of what Tyler's getting at, is like, what do we want people to be common on? How do we move this off the consent agenda without opening up that can of worms about it's a hearing on the contract?
So, my assumption is if nothing changes in the scope of work, that we would proceed with the existing vendor and the existing proposal. The question I want to have answered in two weeks is, does the, does the scope of work need to change based on the questions? Are we asking the right questions with us being informed by members of the community that live with us every day? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
So, I'm not sure I'm fully on board with that in context to, but I, John, maybe I heard you wrong earlier, but I thought what you said was that the Disabilities Board, Developmental Disabilities Board, has already kind of gone through and set the requirements and looked at that, in that that board consists of the makeup that we're talking about.
It's developmental disabilities, different board.
Well, the, alright, so do we have a Disabilities Board?
There, so I'm reading this directly from the, from the contract. I have to admit that this is an area that is over my head at present. I bet you by the time we get through a couple of years of this, I will be, will all be a lot smarter. But yes, it refers to a number of organizations that sanctioned by the federal government to create standards for ADA compliance for transportation improvements, or transportation systems, I'm sorry. And those included those that I read, wherever they are, somewhere in here, yes. The Access Board ADA Accessibility Guidelines, the Access Board's most recent Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, Report on ADA Transition Plans from the National Cooperative Highway Research Program, and Associated Guide to Best Management Practices. So, I think, from my perspective, I think we're talking very much in parallel, that it's very easy for the conversation to sort of cross tracks. We need to get a contract very similar to this one done. If there are some minor changes in how we actually carry out the public involvement portion of the, of the work, I'm sure that we can renegotiate that and it will be fine. If we do something too dramatic and cause the consulting firm to go back and have to redo all of their submittals and all of that, I imagine they might be frustrated with us and who knows what that will lead to. Nonetheless, it doesn't sound like we're going there. I'm afraid that if the focus of the public hearing is specifically whether the language in this contract is, meets everybody's approval, the answer is sure to be no. My question is, what do we do if that happens? And is there room in this conversation for the county to pick up that slack? That is, if there is, if there's an outpouring of concern over certain types of ADA issues in and around county facilities, including roads, buildings, everything, where do we go with that? And should it color whether we move forward with this contract?
Ms. Brenner.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is making me feel a little different. Like, I don't want things so par, this tonight, that's about the transportation part, but also make a motion tonight to hold a hearing. Do we have to introduce for a hearing? I mean, can we make a motion for in two weeks to have a hearing on the county ADA concerns, problems with the county courthouse?
We can, as long as I have specific information for a legal notice, which gets sent to the Herald tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So.
Well, he, that fellow just gave us a whole bunch of, and I'll stay and help write something up, if you want.
So, the Madam Clerk, in her usual efficient manner, texted me that point. So, I would propose the following language, is that we hold a public hearing on the proposed scope of work related to the Watkins County ADA transition plan. That's my motion. That we hold, we hold this for two weeks and we hold that public hearing.
I don't want them to look like they're part of the same thing.
Well, that's my motion. So, you can disagree whether or not, but that's my motion.
I understand. My no is, I'm wondering if we, like, do we talk about it or does it need a second? Okay. The, okay. I wouldn't, I don't necessarily support that portion. I support the input. This is a legal requirement for us to get to code in certain areas and finding those areas. I think that we serve that community best by getting their input on those solutions, because those are areas that we have to spend the money and we're going to have to budget for. And then getting them to help us solve those problems is going to be fantastic. I think if we want to show more gratitude or input to that community, we could ask them, on a separate note, entirely separate, to come back and say, are there areas of opportunity here in the county courthouse building that they could help us address? To me, that, if we're really looking at how we help that segment of our community, we want to work on something that's really going to impact them the most, not something where they're less likely to use it, that we're doing it for a federal reason, right? So, to me, like, their involvement as they come into the courthouse to get marriage certificates or pay for the assessors or go to a court or attend a council meeting is far more likely than possibly using a sidewalk.
Transportation out in the county, yeah.
So, that would be an area where their input in helping identify those pieces, that the infrastructure's here that we don't see as they interact with it, would be phenomenal. But to mingle the contract in, that's an open can of worms. And we're going to end up with a lot of different conversation that, at the end of the day, isn't necessarily going to be beneficial to what we're mandated to do by the feds, which is identify them and then solve the problem. So, to me, it's two different ones. I like the input, I'd love to have them come in and help solve the problems, but the contract, I don't want to open that up. If you need more time to feel comfortable with the contract and get information about it, and you want to delay for that, I'm 100% for it. I don't want to delay it to open it up and say, who wants to do what with this? Because we don't have the money or the time or the manpower just to do what everyone wants. It's.
So, I think we're going to have to bring this to a close just for the sake of it, but I'll make, I'll try and limit to one further comment and then yield the floor.
Yeah, okay. I was going to say.
No, let me make the comment first and then I'll yield the floor. To me, the outcome may be no different if we hold this for two weeks and open for public hearing. Except for one thing I can absolutely guarantee you will be conveyed, is a greater level of respect to the community to give them an opportunity to have participation before we award the contract. And that, to me alone, is worth the two weeks. Mr. Sodou.
Okay, I agree with you, but at the same time, you should think about this thing. When you're inviting the community and say, you can talk about ADA, right? You're giving them that expectation that we are out there, we are looking for your input, how it is inconvenience to you and how we can fix it. But that's not what we are really doing. You know, like, you're giving them this thing that you come and talk about ADA difficulties you have. And another thing, we can't even talk about only courthouse. We have hundreds of buildings. You know, I mean, at least that, we have PDS building, we have Sheriff's Office right next door. You're not talking only this two doors here or coming into the chambers. You're coming, talking about everything. And people, you let them know you're not able to define anything, they will come, and with that expectation, the county is going to do a new ADA plan for the county. Whereas, we are really not. I mean, if you look at page 86, I was looking at the consultant deliverables and draft plan and all this, they're only talking GIS maps. They're going to go, okay, on Hannigan and this road, it's not compliant. Or on this road and this road, this should be marked in such a, such a way. I mean, they're not, we're not even, we are in the city, but we're not even talking about Bellingham city limits. We're talking everything outside Bellingham city limits. And Torrendale city limits and Linden city limits. That's what this is about. So, calling them over and say, we're going to talk about buildings, is giving them a wrong impression. I mean, I think we should do that to know, but you get all the input, what do you do with it? I don't know.
Just for clarity, I wasn't talking about buildings. I'm just talking about this contract, Mr. Bird.
This contract has nothing to do with, with the buildings.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that. I was never talking about buildings.
Oh, okay.
I was never talking about buildings. Ms. Brenner had brought up buildings, I did not. Mr. Bird.
Oh, yeah, that's what he spoke about, what you spoke about.
No, I gave that as, the only reason, let me be clear. The only reason I talked about this building was an example of where I would have thought this was ADA compliant, that anybody could have navigated it. And tonight, we saw the direct difficulty that someone had.
And that's what he spoke about. You know, you may think you had this all separated out, but it didn't sound that way to me, and he didn't sound that way to me. So, I think what you've proven tonight is it's very important that we separate these two things, so that we don't end up giving people a feeling like we're going to do all these other things that we can't do through this contract.
Mr. Bird.
I think that this is a really good case in point about the confusion about, and how it spreads into other topics, and the difficulty in limiting it to this very specific thing. I had that same impression, and that's why I had to ask John about, what is it exactly? Can you give me examples? Because it's getting very broad in my head about what all this was going to entail. If we're sitting here, reading this with this level of education and support from staff, and we're struggling with that, it doesn't seem like it's just me, then people who show up for a public meeting that hear about it from a friend, that heard about it from a friend, are going to come with very different expectations about what will be happening. And so, I think you.
So, Mr. Donovan.
I'm trying to, because, what was the motion that?
The motion was to hold the ADA contract for two weeks and to hold a public hearing on the proposed scope of work related to the Watkins County ADA transition plan.
That's this contract, and it's only about roads.
Yes, I know, and that's all I'm asking. I'm not asking about buildings or anything.
Yeah, because I mean, then this is, I'm going to Mr. Hutchins and some of our concerns, like, I mean, I could see a lot of benefit having community content about how the stakeholder engagement and support could be done, in terms of how you do an ADA accessible survey. How do you get a deeper understanding of factors the disabled community finds important in terms of updating his pedestrian? How to figure out how participants will be recruited through county contacts, including the ADA community groups? Like, that's all in the contract right now. Like, and I think your motion would, we could do that. So, it's not, as much as we were focusing on that, So, it's not, as much as we were focusing on that, it's not just like, well, we're gonna reject the contract or not, but that we want public input on stakeholder engagement for this contract.
But that...
Ms. Brenner.
That's what you do, it's part of the contract, so that's what they will do. And we can get in, you know, we can get input and stuff about that if you want. My big concern is, I just don't want this, like it did for me, seem like it was supposed to have to do with the courthouse and all kinds of things like that.
I, I agree, but I'm also trying to figure, like, I'm just trying to, I don't know, like, thread the needle, these parallel, parallel things, like...
I don't like them too parallel, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I mean, I really appreciate Mr. Brown's interest, and I think we all share this interest, of, of getting feedback about the, the disabled community's concerns broadly. But as far as, if we're gonna keep this for another two weeks and we're gonna have a hearing on it, and we could focus the hearing on this stuff that's in the scope of contract anyway, like, how, you know, how is Public Works supposed to know how to do an online public survey that's ADA accessible? How is, is Public Works supposed to figure out how to get a deeper understanding of factors? You know, we could get some input on that stuff with...
That's, but that's through staff and everything, and the ADA community. Once this, once we decide to do this, that's when, I, I mean, that's my understanding, is that's when it happens.
Or we can get a little, little advanced discussion of it. So, I, I could, as long, you know, as long as it wasn't been, and I agree with what, what some other council motion's saying, I don't want people to think, okay, you know, we're gonna throw this out and expand the scope of work of this contract. I, I think we should have more robust discussion about, you know, how we're responsive to the community's broader concerns. And maybe this contract is an opening to say, okay, so we got task three in this contract, tell us, give us some ideas about how PDS...
Help us do it. Help us figure out how we do it. This is not telling us how we're doing it, it's telling us what we have to do. They're the ones that can help tell us how we do it as we get to each phase, because there is that part about the engagement of the ADA community, I think it was called, something like that.
And it, it does sound, Mr. Brown and Mr. Donovan, that you're, you're right on the same, you're right in track with each other, and I, I think Public Works would welcome that kind of conversation with the community, to open the door to how does the county respond to its responsibilities under this contract?
Exactly.
And I think that conversation with the community would be, would be very, in this venue, would be very useful.
So, I just wanna, in the five and a half years I've been on the, almost five and a half years I've been on the county council, we have had zero invitations extended to the ADA community that talked to us about the issues or the way we should approach what we do. Zero. We've never invited them, to the best of my knowledge, at a council level. Now, your staff may have, executive staffs may have, but the council has never asked them to come and testify. I think that, again, it may change nothing in terms of the outcome, but I just think the curti- and, and the only change I would anticipate is a change in the scape, scope of work, perhaps minor, perhaps zero, to the, the contract as it relates to the ADA transportation issues you got outlined here. I just think it's courteous, before we write a check for 140-odd $5,000, that we turn around and we give them an opportunity to present to us. That's all. Ms. Brenner.
Well, I move that we have a public hearing related to ADA concerns and problems with county facilities, but do it as a separate issue. There's no way that people aren't, you talk about being courteous. How courteous it is, is it to have people talk about stuff that we can't even do through this contract? How is that courteous? To me, courteous is acknowledging what this young man said and dealing with it as an issue.
So, procedurally, we have a motion on the, well, I made a motion, did I have a second? Mr. Donovan's second, so we'll have to dispose of my motion one way or the other before you can make another motion, unless your motion is a motion to amend.
No, it's a separate, whole separate issue, and I wanna keep them separate.
So, I, I almost feel like calling my own question.
No, that's fine. It's just a friendly amendment. Could you make your motion? I'm struggling to, to vote for the motion, because I, I wanna give you the time, but I also, I feel like that's more than time that's opening up a can of worms. So, friendly amendment, could you tailor your motion in a way that it was specific to kind of the direction that Councilmember Donovan was going about addressing how the community would interact with those three specific items? So, not asking how they would change the scope, but we have these three specific elements of the contract, and we would like you to provide input on how you would see those rolling out. And then we would know, potentially, if that had an impact, that we'd have to communicate back, and that would merit holding the contract, but it would also be very specific about how we get their engagement in the process after we've identified the issues.
So, what were your three specific things that he's referring to?
Oh, it was task, task three, stakeholder engagement, getting feedback on, I guess it'd be 3.1, 3.2, 3.3 on page 84. And I wouldn't wanna make it too narrow, but like, the reason we want feedback, that would be, that would be like the main, you know, and, and maybe that'll engender a broader conversation of stuff beyond the scope of the contract, but we want feedback on how does PDS work with Transpo to do task three about stakeholder engagement and support.
So, that's completely compatible, and I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
But then better words for me?
Yeah.
Than what I gave you.
Let's carry on.
So, okay, so, so we would hold a public hearing on the proposed scope of work, section three, stakeholder engagement support of the Watkins County ADA transition plan. Is that clear for the county clerk?
Section three.
Page 84.
Page 84, which is task three, stakeholder engagement support. And I think your point is very valid, or both of your points are very valid, that we, we, I think, and I think it sounds like we've got an agreement, that we need to talk to the ADA community about what, the way to do proper outreach to them before we sit down and say, we're gonna do the outreach. We need them to tell us how to do that.
That will be allowed even once we do this contract.
Right, but it may change the scope of work, because it may, it may, for example, they may say, well, you've, you've gotta do stuff for hearing impaired, or you've gotta, you know, do stuff for the, for the blind, you know? I mean, you've got, you've got, you know, traffic signals that have sounds to them for people who can't see the lights. So, so I think, yeah, I think that's, that's a valid point.
Good first step.
All right. So, I will accept that as a friendly amendment, is a second to you.
Yep.
Further discussion on that motion, then?
I just wanna show my apprehension that it'll actually confuse the issue than solve the issue. I'm okay with that. If we wanna try it and figure it out in the public, we can. But the way I see, that it really talks about ADA accessibility guideline, then, you know, like, it's a National Cooperative Highway Research Program Transition Plan A. If you look at page 84, the fourth bullet point, it's only talking about highways, it's talking about, like, out in the county, what the barriers are and how to remove those barriers. Are we able to express that to the people who we are inviting? That's what my concern is.
Yeah.
Do they know what they're coming for? If you just use the word ADA, a normal person thinks, oh, how to open the door, how to go into a building, how to get out of a building, that's all we think about. We don't think about out on the highway or the curves on the, on the, on the roads, you know? Or when there is a bus stop, if you are ADA, how do you dismount or how you mount into the bus, and then somebody can take your wheelchair away? I mean, so, I, I'm a little bit confused myself that how it will add value. It will add value if we now tell the Public Works Department that as the consultant start and draw an outline that these are the five barriers, we should put that in front of ADA community, that this is what work we started, and these are the five, seven, 10, 20 things that we have identified. We want your input on those items. Then they understand, this is the document they're coming to testify on. Today, there is nothing clear. The word ADA is so encompassing, it's so huge, we will actually have more confusion than, than clarity what we are trying to gain. I think we should respect them, that Public Works should do that and inform the council so we can have that consultant come here, talk to the people, and people are here, talk back to us. That's my thought.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
And, and one thing that could help, too, is calling it ADA transition. Transition would mean all kinds of things to all kinds of people. We're talking to Public Works about roads. We get it now. But I got confused, and if you hadn't explained all this to me, I would've still been thinking, well, we're also talking about the courthouse and everything else. Transition doesn't work for the, for the regular person out there about what that means. So, I just would like to see two separate issues dealt with separately, whether we wait two weeks or not. But I don't wanna, I, what I don't wanna see is people showing, I don't think it's respectful that people show up and have all their hopes on this, that it's gonna be all encompassing, if we, if that's not what this is allowed to be. That's my, my big concern is about respecting the community. And that's why I'd like to see us do a, you know, have a public hearing and set up in, either in a, an existing committee or set up a committee to deal with the all-encompassing ADA issues, which will happen. I don't know why we don't set up a, a committee to do that anyway, that, that involves ADA people, not just professionals. 'Cause that, that's what we seem to get a lot of, is prof- not that the professionals aren't great, and Deacon, you are wonderful. So, it's, I know, but there are plenty of great professionals, but I didn't even realize we had a consultant from the ADA community. I thought that was amazing. And, and I guess I do wanna take a little bit of advantage of them by getting as much information as the ADA community can provide. I just don't want the confusion of these two things.
Is everybody clear on the, on the motion, and is there any further discussion?
Yeah. I don't want that word "transition" used, say, ro- say, on public roads.
Did it change while I was out? Okay.
Well, what you missed when you were out is, transition doesn't tell me anything, that it's about public roads.
Yeah. See?
I mean, this is, that is just naming the contract that they're issuing.
I understand, but we're looking at it different than the average people look at these words.
Discussion on the main, discussion on the motion on the floor, Mr. Soddo.
Yeah. Well, I wanna talk about the word "transition." The "transition" really means from one mode to another one, you know? That, and highway, or if you have a grade, you are two feet high, how you transition to this, if you transition, that's what the word "transition" is.
But it could mean to somebody, oh, transition to a better ADA courthouse.
This was my first reaction when I looked at it.
Me, too.
When I was reading it yesterday, that, oh, wow.
Well, it wasn't my first reaction, but it was today with what you said and what the, the young man said.
What's the, the motion again?
Motion is to hold a public hearing on the proposed scope of task three, stakeholder engagement of the work related to the Watkins County ADA transition plan, AB 2019-319. I'll just make that clear.
Change that "transition" to "public road plan." Then it'll be about public roads.
Say, um...
I will accept it.
Hold a public hearing to gather input on community involvement as it pertains to...
I didn't even get it with...
I'm just, I'm just taking the language out of the scope of work.
I understand, but that's, that's, that's like professional language. It's not...
Ms. Brenner, Mr. Bird had the floor.
Oh, yeah, that was it. That's, I, I think the, the goal is to get the input on how they can participate or how they'd like us to, to gather their participation or to have their participation within the contract, right? So, as it pertains to this contract and this project, so...
Why they call it the consent agenda?
So, perhaps I can, perhaps I can, perhaps this will satisfy you, Ms. Brenner. I'll try and see if I've accepted this as a friendly amendment. To hold a public hearing on the proposed scope of work, task three, stakeholder engagement related to the Watkins County ADA public roads transition plan.
I think I can handle that.
All right. Is that, is that right? Any further discussion? I've, God, I've sucked up a lot of time on this issue, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 7-0. Okay.
I always thought of...
All right.
Now I can shut up.
So, we have one more item from the...
Oh, jeez, we're not even...
Finance and Administrators.
I thought, oh, let's go home.
Administrator Services Committee.
There are two more.
Yeah.
More, yeah.
I'll transition to that, yes. The item number one on page seven is AB 2019-310, request authorization for the county executor to enter into a 35-year lease agreement between Watkins County and Watkins County Search and Rescue Council to provide for Watkins County search and rescue usage of real property to house their operation in furtherance of their public service for the annual amount of $1. This received 3-0 vote. I so move for approval.
Move for approval? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0.
So, now, another thing that we had a discussion on the, I actually had a presentation on crisis stabilization facility operations, and Mr. Buchanan has a couple of resolutions to, to present.
Thank you, Councilmember Soddo. I have two motions to introduce on that subject that we talked about this morning, which was the crisis stabilization facility. If you remember, during this morning's discussion, the county executive said he would like to move ahead with construction, and he wanted the council to adopt a motion to that respect. So, I would move to concur with the administration to move forward on the construction of the crisis stabilization facility.
Seconded discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The second motion, we, there's a grant that the North Sound Behavioral Health Organization is dedicating $104,880 in order for us to furnish that. So, my next motion would be, I move to order the furnishings for the crisis stabilization facility to utilize the North Sound Behavioral Health Organization dedication of $104,880.
Second.
They moved and seconded discussion, Mr. Bird.
Uh, did I miss, do, do we have the grant already? As they come in front of the council?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Otherwise, it'll expire.
We just don't have...
Too many people.
Sorry.
Mr. Bird, you had the floor.
No, I just, I couldn't hear the answer, so...
Yes.
Yes, we do. What we don't have is funding.
Your move, your motion was to spend the money?
Encumber.
Move to order the furnishings, was the request.
Okay, but we haven't built the building yet, have we?
Well, encumber.
Encumber means...
We have until June 30th to encumber this grant.
Yeah. You encumber it.
Do that now.
Come on.
You can take a delivery in two years, you just encumber it.
Okay.
That's what it means.
I use that word every day.
Me, too.
Bifurcate and encumber, that's our lingo tonight.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's the lingo.
Do it.
Encumber.
All right. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0.
Well, thank you, that was fairly painless.
I exhausted it, I exhausted everybody before.
Put that on the consent agenda.
Don't get used to it. Anne is expert on ADA now.
All right. Next up is AB 2019-2329, request confirmation of county executive's appointment.
Excuse me?
There's one more.
There's one more. I have one more.
Tell me, too.
No, that's a different agenda.
No, this is a different thing. It's right here.
It's not in my script.
It's on the pink sheet, on page...
It's not allowed, it's not in my script. Sorry.
No committee assigned, then.
We're waiting.
Want me to go? Okay, well, I didn't get anything from you. Okay. So, AB 2019-307 is a resolution regarding reducing incarceration of young adults, and we'd be the council acting as the health board. Just a quick history of this, if you remember right, we had a team that, via the MacArthur Foundation grant, we went to San Francisco last June, and we studied impacts on young adults, twenty, eighteen to twenty-four, and, and as, with respect to incarceration. We came home with some homework that we had to do over a year, one of which was a joint resolution that we decided to, rather than just have the city of Bellingham and us do a joint, we decided having it done by the health department covers all the jurisdictions in the county. So this has been circulated to all the councils, mayors, law enforcement of all the jurisdictions in the county. And we're headed back to Philadelphia to, for the final kind of wrap-up of this conference, and so this is one of our accomplishments that we did during that time. So I would move approval of this resolution.
It's been moved to approval, it's been seconded by Mr. Donovan. Mr. Bird?
Barry, I'd like to support this, but it just, I have a fundamental problem with the things that we, we do that show up the day of, that we're supposed to take votes with how busy we are with days like this, finding things on the chair that I don't have a chance to read. If you held it for two weeks, or it was in the agenda packet, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I want, I, I think we should be doing, is that everything we vote on should be in here, so...
So I would like to respond to that. This was, this was in the packet, so this has been...
Packet?
This has been in your packet for a week, over a week.
I wonder why it's orange, then?
This is just a letter from the city of Bellingham that's supporting it.
Oh, I thought you were asking us to vote on the orange piece.
No, no, I was just...
No, 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 no.
Had it in my hand, but...
Oh, oh, okay.
In the packet.
Yeah.
All right, you're talking about number two, AB 2019-30.
Yep, yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought...
No, that's okay. I should have, I should have clarified, this was just a letter of support from the city council and the mayor.
Okay, thank you for that, Barry. Okay, I support that. Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Next item up is AB 2019-329, Request Confirmation of the County Executive's Appointment of Sonia Max to the Bicycle Perdition pedestrian advisory committee.
Do you confirm?
Ms. Frazee moves to affirm, and Mr. Donovan seconds discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. Next item up is Request Confirmation of County Executive's Appointment of Arissa Owen Turner to the Watkins County Developmental Disabilities Board. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to confirm.
Mr. Donovan moves to confirm.
Second.
Ms. Frazee seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. Next item up is Introductions, item one through four. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Move approval.
Ms. Brenner moves approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. Next item up is Special Committee of the Whole. Mr. Donovan.
Oh, that's right, I was, I was shank, I needed to chairing that. Special Committee of the Whole held a hearing on proposal for apprentices. The actual title of the ordinance was requiring that public funds used for construction projects do double duty by also providing apprentices with job training to meet the requirements necessary to become the next generation of skilled trades, and I believe we held that for two weeks for further discussion.
But that wasn't the first Committee of the Whole.
No, but that's okay.
Thanks.
Oh, am I supposed to, that was the...
Yeah, there was...
I, I missed, I missed you up, you were fine, I'll recover, don't worry.
Yeah.
Hunted.
I'll fall on my sword on that one, go on.
Okay, but I wasn't chair of the Lake Watkins one, do you want me to do that one?
No, I'll do that one, because I was the chair.
Or didn't it?
So I'm on the three fifteen one, is what I'm talking about.
Yes.
And that was held for further discussion for two weeks.
And then the other Special Committee of the Whole was a discussion regarding the proposed rate structure for Lake Watkins, and we moved, we made a resolution to the county staff to come back to us with an ordinance for consideration. Next item up was Finance and Administrative Services. Anything else, Mr. Sado?
No, I'm fine.
We had one presentation from, we had, we had some presentations.
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, committee report. I thought you were asking personally, yes. We had a presentation on the Watkins County Finance Department Q1 financial report. The only highlight was that the sales tax is going up, but our permit fees have been reduced because of the weather, and he thinks that because of the construction activity I see in the county, that probably in Q2 we'll see an increase in the permit fees as well.
But just, sales tax revenues are going up, sales tax rates...
Sales tax revenue, yes, sorry.
Be clear, for anybody watching at home.
Saved us from a lynching after the meeting, okay. Mr., and then you had a second issue with the health department, didn't you?
We dealt with that crisis stabilization facility, we already did.
Okay, all right.
We just did the resolution Mr. Buchanan did.
Right, but we had a presentation from Ann, Ann Deacon as well.
That's what...
Oh, Ann Deacon was the crisis stabilization, and, and, okay, oh, so, he dealt with that already.
I'm clearly more tired than I thought.
Okay, yes.
Public Works.
Okay, we had a great quarterly report from Watkins County Public Works. John Hutchings is amazing. He...
He's left the door, room.
Yeah, too bad he's not here, but he is amazing. I love the visuals in his Public Works quarterly presentations there. So they're not just interesting, they are really informative, so I like how he does it.
Barbara made him blush.
What?
You made him blush.
Oh, oh, yeah, I said, because he, he introduced people who are in different positions now in Public Works, and he was saying how lucky we are to have them and how wonderful they are, and I go, well, they're really lucky to have you for a boss. I said, I, I would love to work for you. He's really a very special person. There you go, I said it. Okay, second was, we got information on, from Public Works staff on the East Smith Road and Hannigan Road intersection improvements, and while I am sort of okay with the idea, I'm a little concerned about how we get there. Stay tuned. The next thing, we held the ordinance granting Deer Creek Water Association a franchise, and also the one granting Glenhaven Lakes Club Incorporated a franchise dealing with water, because we, I need some more information. I, I came up with some ideas, and I put them all in your box, and they've all been stamped, so these are pretty simple ideas that, to me, they're all about public process, they're not really about telling the franchises what to do at all, they're just making sure that information is available to people in the districts, and things are done very transparently. The, yeah, and those, that was it.
Other business, council member updates, Mr. Buchanan?
So I may miss, miss the next evening council meeting, because that's the day before we go to Philadelphia. I need to make my way to Seattle that night, but I'll be here during the day.
Well, can't you fly, drive to Seattle, like, at midnight? What's the big deal?
I tried that last time, and it wasn't all that fun.
I'm just kidding.
Ms. Frazee?
I just want to say the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee met last week, and Don Goldberg is going to be coming forward with, there is a housing crisis, and there's not workforce housing, so we can't get any businesses to move here because there's no housing. So...
Good point.
He's going to be bringing different ideas from the advisory committee, a lot of them, I think only cities could do, but some the county could think about and try to incorporate.
Ms. Donovan?
Nothing I'd like to thank and commend the executives for moving forward on the crisis stabilization facility. It's been really important for our community.
Ms. Brenner?
I brought up this last time about the drought contingency plan. Well, I found a letter that is part of the application for that plan, that states Watkins County supports the PUD's application for doing this. We, we know, I, to my knowledge, the council never knew about it or agreed, or voted on anything like that, so I'm very concerned, this thing is, seems to be going on around the council, rather than with our, our participation, and I think, I don't think it's legal to have a letter that says Watkins County supports that, because we didn't, to my knowledge, I've never, I've never seen the vote, I went back through as much stuff as I could, I didn't find anywhere that we voted on something like that, so stay tuned.
Mr. Bird?
In our finance committee meeting, we got the presentation for the quarterly 29 report, and on page fourteen, there, there was a kind of a mess up with labeling, so the Mental Health and Development Disabilities Fund, 127, says that we've budgeted forty-nine thousand in revenues and seventy-one thousand in expenses, and, and spent six hundred and forty-eight thousand, and received six hundred and forty-eight thousand, so the labels were wrong, and, and they were going to put up an updated version of this with the corrected...
Ms. Sado?
Nothing to report.
I went last, last week, yes, last week I went down to Arizona to see the homeless, there's a homeless center down there, a campus that provides a centralized approach to homelessness issues, where everything from medical clinic to quite a large dental clinic, to housing, accommodation, workforce reentry, ID recovery, which is the, the main reason I went down there, was to see the program down there. It was quite interesting to see that the, there was one businessman, I can't remember his name, who many years ago funded the construction of this campus, and it provides a centralized facility for, for both, you know, triaging those who are experiencing homelessness and then going through all the process of what they actually need to get reestablished. It was really quite an impressive operation. The dental clinic alone, I can't remember, I think they said they had twenty-four full-time staff, three one million dollar machines that had been donated to them, and by, by companies that make those machines, right? I'm assuming they're very sophisticated x-ray machines, and they are staffed, they are one of the two main places, I think, in the country where dental students come and donate their time, and that's where the, most of the dental staff are, so it was, it was quite impressive. And if anybody wants to tour the campus, I'm sure I could make an introduction. Mr. Bird?
Thank you, Steve. My head, I make this quantum leap from that to the apprenticeship program, and I can't help but wonder, I know, Barry's like, what? How the heck did that happen? But, but I mean, I can't help but wonder, like, we have this shortage, and we have people, I mean, is there a way to transition homeless individuals and train them and get them into a housing program if they meet certain criteria, and solve two problems at the same time? If that's not something that we couldn't address with, with a committee and process, but quantum leap.
And, by the way, the number one barrier to that down there, which is why I went down there, is an inability to, is the need to require identification first, so they can actually fill in a W nine.
identification?
Photo ID and a social security number, otherwise they can't pass the verify requirements. So, anyway. Any other business?
No.
Seeing none, we're adjourned.